All right, we will call our 5:00 PM meeting to order and we will turn it over to Plan RBA. Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
All right, thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thanks for having me. It's been a while since I've been here. I'm ready, yeah. Well, it's nice to see all of you. I was coming, spending quite a bit of time in this room for a while with the Citizen Workgroup meetings and then fell off. I think there's a big meeting coming up, prepping for your September Board presentation, so it's been exciting.
Speak of the devil.
Hi, great, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Good to see you too.
My leg?
No, you're on top.
I don't have a leg.
Well, for those of you that I haven't met, I think I was, I was trying to think when I was last here in the large board meeting, we had staff give a presentation on the Long Range Transportation Plan. So I was trying to think of other things to talk about today, but if you don't remember, my name is Martha Schubel, I'm the Executive Director at Plan RBA, Richmond Regional Planning District Commission. And maybe if there are people watching at home, I'll say it's, that's the regional commission, one of 21 in Virginia that your locality is a part of. We have nine localities here in the central Virginia region that are part of Plan RBA. And our focus is really to be able to support intergovernmental relations with local governments. We focus mostly on the built environment. We were founded in 1969 and really focusing on the realities of what growth looks like in Virginia and how we think about the built environment and responding to that growth across jurisdictional boundaries. So I wanted to share with you a little bit of an update about a pretty big step that the commission took in June this year to adopt our new strategic plan. It's a vision, a set of vision statements for our regional strategic plan that we've named Pathways to the Future. So a couple of background, I mentioned that Plan RBA is one of 21 PDCs in Virginia. General Assembly established us in 1968 and organizations were formed across the Commonwealth in the early, late 1960s, early 1970s. We were, I think collectively all chartered by around 1972 or so. And there are some requirements, responsibilities that the General Assembly established for planning district commissions in the Regional Cooperation Act that has been slowly amended over time, but I think the latest amendment was like in the 90s. So we've been pretty steady, steady structure since then. But one of the most important deliverables that planning district commissions have is to develop, prepare a regional strategic plan. And we are required to report annually to the General Assembly on the status of that plan and what we've been doing to implement and realize that plan for the future. So over the years, we've used different documents to fulfill that requirement. And about 10 years ago, when I moved to the region, we were using our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Funding for that fell off and so we didn't actually do another Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy after 2018. So then we started using our Long Range Transportation Plan, again trying to think about, what are, what's the sort of biggest planning product that we have? And how can we make that satisfy the majority of the requirements? And about five years ago, we explored this idea, kind of a new notion in planning called scenario planning. And so instead of taking the idea that we look to the past and we form a trajectory and that's just the direction that we're headed, so we're going to plan accordingly. Scenario planning says, well, what are all the potential things that could happen that might change the direction that our region is headed? Big economic development announcement, pandemic, natural disaster, technology, data centers, you know, what are, I mean, you think about, what are all the things that 10 years ago you didn't anticipate you would have to be talking about, sitting around a board of supervisors table? And so scenario planning is really about kind of laying all those different things out there and identifying, well, what could the potential futures be? Which ones do we want to drive toward and which ones do we want to drive against? And how do we think about that trajectory along the way and being able to kind of moderate, modulate that? So as we started to invest in that tool, we developed what's called a scenario, scenario planning model. It's a computer model that takes all of the different trends that we've seen in the region over the last 30 or so years and it plugs in projection, projected calculation. So think about like population growth. We can take historic population growth and we can say, well, Virginia's been pretty steady statewide around population growth, so we're going to assume that we're going to continue to grow at that same rate. Well, what would happen if things might change at the local policy level or otherwise that would drive an increase or a decrease in that population trajectory? And we do that same thing around economic growth. We do the same thing, thinking about the demographics of the population. We know that our region overall is aging, so the median age of our region is getting older over time. And so there are different things that we might think about are needed in our community when we think about our, our community is getting older as a group. And so along that same amount of time over the last five years or so, Plan RBA has gotten a lot more involved in other types of planning. We've picked up, in addition to transportation and economic development planning, we also do work in emergency management, hazard mitigation, green infrastructure and environmental planning. Have gotten in a little bit into the, to the work or space of affordable housing. So we've really started to build out a broader portfolio of planning products. And as you all probably are aware, there's been a tide shift in the way that the region thinks about coordination. And so localities in some areas are working more cooperatively with each other now than they were before. And the needs of the communities have changed. I'm going to talk about it a little bit later, but we probably weren't talking about transit in Powhatan a couple of years ago, and now microtransit has expanded to cover the entirety of the county, you know. So those are things that, as demands in our communities shift over time, we start to think about differently. So kind of touch on this a little bit, we're imagining this regional strategic vision to encompass all of those core planning products that we provide. So transportation there at the top, the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization is an entity that Plan RBA staffs, but it is the place where the elected leaders from around the region come together to identify and plan for the transportation needs across the region. We've kicked off a new Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It's going to get finalized in October this year and have kind of revived that planning process and have been actively engaged with Roxanne and her colleagues from around the region in economic development to identify what those kind of key, big regional economic development needs and goals are. We'll be finishing in December an air quality plan. That's really looking at how we can identify changes to that trajectory around the accumulation of greenhouse gases and our air quality related to that. So you can think about things from a strategy perspective about, of course, vehicle-related contributors to air quality, but also I think really interesting things have surfaced that I've learned a lot about, even the idea of thinking about preventing compost material from going into the waste stream. And so how can we divert that and be able to preserve the emissions that come from that type of waste in our, in our landfill? So hazard mitigation plan is a five-year planning cycle that we've been doing for the last 20 or so years. We work with the Crater Planning District to identify the potential natural hazards that are likely to occur in our region and then what are the mitigation strategies to prevent the loss of life and property as a result of those? So flooding is kind of top of mind for everybody in the country right now, but certainly is something that we're well aware of. And I know even with just yesterday's storms, you know, the realities of what happens with power outages and other types of damages as heavy winds come through. So just a couple of examples there. The last hazard mitigation plan that we updated four and a half years ago included a new natural hazard in Radon. So we're kind of always evaluating those types of different potential hazards and risks to our community and what we need to do about that. We've got a natural resources plan that'll be finalized later this fall, I think in the November timeframe, and that's really looking at green infrastructure. And so how do we think about preserving the natural environment so that we can make sure that from a water quality standpoint runoff isn't, isn't bringing all of those nasty chemicals from life into the river and how do we preserve our water quality? But then also thinking about the preservation of our other natural resources and preserving the character of this, of this region that makes it special. And then finally, from a housing perspective, we actually leaned on partnership for housing affordability. So Liggins, that's on that board of directors with me and colleagues from around the region, but we've leaned into and have essentially pulled the housing framework from partnership for housing affordability into our work. So we didn't go out and reinvent a new plan, we just said, there's a good plan here that, that we'll lean into. So these are kind of our, if you think about it, kind of component pieces. It's almost like when you play Trivial Pursuit and you're getting a little pie piece when you go around the board. This is the kind of thing that we're trying to do. There's an email in my inbox today from Catherine O'Donnell about updating the Richmond Region Tourism Master Plan. So we'd love to be able to think about how that, again, tourism's not the space that we occupy or work in, but how can we start to bring this in so that all of these plans are working together for cohesion and coordination? So this is kind of the drumroll thing. When the board met in, we'd been talking about the regional strategic plan and kind of the components and how we were thinking about this for the last year, but when the board met in June, they adopted these strategic plan vision statements. And so on the next couple of slides, I'll walk you through them, but there's five pieces to it. Strategic and resilient, infrastructure, a healthy environment, attainable housing, a strong economy, opportunity and choice for everyone. These were the ingredients, if you will. We've been talking a lot about this feeling like a piece of pie, sorry, not a piece of, but a whole pie. And these are the ingredients when we think about the pie for the region. We came up with these by reviewing all of the local comprehensive plans, any of the local strategic plans, any, any planning document that we could put our hands on. We didn't put it through an AI reader, our staff read through every single one of them and took notes and identified key themes. And then we've been socializing this for the last year and a half to say, you know, when you think about your plan and your vision for your county and then you think about that, how that fits into the greater, greater Richmond region, do these kind of jive? And the answer was over and over again, yeah. And we've massaged the language a little bit as we went along through the process, but these themes kind of kept coming back for, for the leadership from around the region. So the question is, what do we mean by this? And so we've got a little, you know, sentence or two for each of these that describe what it is that we're talking about. And the idea is that as we develop each one of these core plans, they will tie back to and support these five vision statements. So when we talk about strategic and resilient infrastructure, we're talking about those infrastructures and systems that are designed and maintained to protect and enhance individual and community health and wellbeing. Healthy environment, we want that to be a thriving set of ecosystems with watersheds, new air, fruit for working lands, flourishing habitats, and communities that are located and planned in ways that recognize connections between environmental health and human health and wellbeing. Attainable housing that provides across the region diverse housing stock that makes attainable housing options for everyone that are safe, comfortable, resource efficient, and built to meet our needs and services. From an economic perspective, we are striving for a region with diverse and resilient economic base, an educated and skilled workforce, employment that enables workers to meet their family needs and communities with physical, structural, and social conditions to support and attract employers, workers, investors. And then finally, opportunity and choice for everyone, where everybody that's here has an opportunity to engage and collaborate with all the voices and create pathways to success through access to jobs, housing, infrastructure, services, quality education, healthy environment, and other elements that allow all individuals and families to thrive. They're definitely interconnected themes. We wanted to make sure that they were mutually enforceable, but also that, you know, standalone, they can start to articulate where we're headed as a, as a region. And so I kind of talked a little bit about this, but we've got these multiple planning efforts that are underway right now. We're deep into the throes of the transportation plan, excuse me, the Long Range Transportation Plan that's scheduled to be completed and approved next fall in 2026. So we're about a year halfway through that process right now. We'll have the Economic Development Strategy that's being developed and finalized at the end of September this year. We'll submit to the United States Economic Development Administration. And then as soon as we submit that plan, then we'll start to work to get our designation as an Economic Development District, which hopefully will enable us to access additional grant funding to be able to implement the strategies in that plan. The Natural Resources Plan is underway and I guess I misspoke earlier. It's, it's going to push into the first quarter of next fiscal year, or next calendar year. So we'll be wrapping that up, looks like around February. And then our Hazard Mitigation Plan will kick off next year. Frankly, probably not by the end of 2025. We've got a couple of applications in to be able to fund that, just trying to hedge on availability of federal funding, but in all, in all likelihood, it'll be more like a next spring kickoff for that project. And then our Air Quality Plan is scheduled to wrap and gets submitted to US EPA in December of this year. And so the idea is that we're either in a plan development stage or we're in a plan implementation stage. We don't, as professionals, we don't want to put so much time and energy and effort into plans and then they sit on shelves. So as you can see, each, each instance where the plan is completed, we're either already rolling on implementation or we're ready to pick up implementation as soon as we wrap the planning process. So the idea here is that, you know, really we can identify synergies. I had a great call on Friday with Toby, your new Director of the Community Services Board for Powhatan and Goochlin, and just were kind of swapping experience and learning a little bit more about his background. But, you know, where can we really identify opportunity for partnership with data sharing? You know, what opportunities might we be able to collaborate with the CSB and other community-based organizations to be able to get into the community a little bit more? I've got a pretty small staff, it's 30 people, two people dedicated to community engagement, which is a lot for us, but two people across the region is, makes it hard. And so we really look at partnerships with our community organizations to get the word out about how to get involved and understand what the issues are that are most important in local communities. And everything we do is really focused on that data. So I wanted to talk a little bit in the future or about some things that are kind of in my mind and on our agenda this year, but this is just a smattering of some of the organizations that we work with to think about this. So I mentioned, we've pulled in already Partnership for Housing Affordabilities, Housing Framework, just talking earlier about Richmond Region Tourism and their Tourism Master Plan. We also have Central Virginia Waste Management Authority that manages the recycling program for, for most of the region and then also provides support to DEQ and our mandated reporting around solid waste, solid waste capacity or landfill capacity. So that solid waste plan was approved last year and is part of our family of core plans. Again, not duplicating, but trying to really be connected. And then all those organizations along the bottom are growing coalition of partners that are really supporting RBA Rising, our effort to get laser focus on economic mobility. Operationally, at the same time that the board, the same meeting where the board approved that vision statement and those five goals, we also approved the budget for this fiscal year. About three or four years ago, we adopted this practice of identifying key imperatives for the year. So from an operational perspective, this is the set of measures, if you will, that I'm held accountable to. So as you can imagine, above all, as an organization is, from a revenue perspective, is about 80% funded through the federal government, federal grants. Compliance and sustainability is a main focus for this fiscal year. But in addition to that, we also are really focused on investing in our data capacity and supporting our local governments with providing information that's, that's useful to you to make good decisions. We offer technical assistance in local planning and that could be support to the comp plan update like we've been doing with Powhatan, but also, and that's been providing data too, but it could be grant writing. It could be technical assistance from a programmatic area, transportation or emergency management or environmental or, or community development perspective. We've got kind of the core bread and butter of the work that we do, which is create, develop, and implement these regional plans. And then finally, another role that we play in the region is just really around bringing partners together. So I'm a big believer that you can't really work together until you know each other. And so we do a lot of, I think strategically, but we do a lot of events where we just encourage people to come together and get to know one another, find areas of common interest. There are lots of things that we can identify that we disagree on, but there's many, many more that we agree on. And so really, that's been the focus of the agency for the last 10 years of finding that common area of interest and then working on those things that matter together. So I was trying to think a little bit about what in the world does all this mean for Powhatan County? So thinking about last fiscal year and then heading into this new fiscal year, with the TPO Policy Board meets on the 7th, they'll hear from our staff member, Dan Mata, talking about the regional transit study that was initiated last year. So that was an assessment of potential growing transit needs across the region with focus in Powhatan, Goochlin, Hanover, Uckent, and Charles City. So we've got fixed route service in the core of the Richmond region and the urbanized areas covering most of the city of Richmond and decent parts of the more populated areas of Henrico and Chesterfield. And then GRTC, simultaneous with the study, launched the microtransit zones, which I think you all are pretty familiar with by now, but, and then of course, we've expanded that, they have expanded the service area in Powhatan to be the whole county since then. But this really helps to be able to identify, you know, what are the potential needs in this community? And what are the potential solutions to meet that need? Is it more on-demand service? At what point does the county anticipate kind of tipping over into that need to have maybe some express routes or that type of thing? And then how do we think about funding that? So that's part, components of what the transit study includes. We kicked off this summer a housing market value analysis. That's probably ill-timed, quite frankly, for you all, because you've already had the habitat study and have had ongoing work group conversations at length about the housing mix in the county. But nevertheless, we're going to have some data for you over the next couple of months. We've engaged a company out of Philadelphia called the Reinvestment Fund. They're a nonprofit research company that's done two previous studies of the Richmond region from a housing market data perspective. This is the first year that it includes our rural communities in the Plan RBA footprint. So we're grateful from some grant funding that we got to be able to renew that project and we'll be able to, over time, the idea is that we refresh that data every three years to really understand what's going on in the housing market. It can identify really interesting themes around submarkets. What might be happening with aging housing stock? Is it getting recirculated as starter homes? Or is it moving into kind of a different type of, of use for housing occupancy in time year? And so it's really helpful to be able to understand that. I wasn't here in the, in the Richmond region during the foreclosure crisis in 08, 09, so I don't really know how foreclosures impacted this county, but it's the type of resource that can really help identify and predict those types of vulnerabilities in the market where we've got softness and some elasticity. Water supply planning is a big topic right now. The DEQ has a, well, the State Water Control Board has a mandate for all localities in the Commonwealth to participate in and submit as part of a regional water supply plan by 2029. So we're the designated regional planning unit lead for this region and this watershed that are footprint. And then some of the communities in the tri-cities are a part of. So we'll be supporting that. Our first step in that process is to compile everyone's local water supply plan and identify where we've got discrepancies that we need to correct and then identify any kind of updates to projections, economic development announcements, changes in your underlying land use and zoning ordinance and comp plans, those types of things that might affect water consumption. So those things are kind of in different stages of wrapping up, kind of underway and kicking off and then getting started over the next year and a half or so. Also wanted to let you know that the board took action to designate a portion of your member dues to supporting our data capacity. So as part of that, we'll be delivering a demographic profile for each of the jurisdictions. So our staff, Mark Bitner, led by Mark Bitner, will be reaching out to staff on your team. Will probably want some help about who he should be working with. But the idea is, we don't really want to spit out and regurgitate data that you already know and have, but like what would be some interesting information that you'd like to have available to help support your decision-making? So could be demographic, population kind of stuff, economic data, the housing data, you know, just kind of different areas of that. Things that we've heard from other localities are, we really need to get our hands on what's going on with substance abuse. Who's that affecting? Is it going up, is it going down? Other communities are asking more questions around mental health. So that's frankly, an area that we're not as familiar with, kind of the human services, human side of that. But we'll work with our partners to be able to gather that as needed. And then just the ongoing work that we've been following with your comp plan update was another one that kind of came to mind and just want to make sure that we're, you're a one-ninth owner of our organization, so we want to make sure that we're responsive to what's happening here. Obviously, we do a lot of work that's at the regional level, but we also wanted to make sure that we have plenty of staff resources that are reserved specifically for technical assistance or support needs that the county might have. So I was hoping that some of, if I didn't overextend my time, I was hoping maybe I could get some feedback from you about what you think we could be doing to serve the county better.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Couple of questions. The housing study, the rest that we contracted with and outside for, when do you anticipate, when do you anticipate that study being completed?
It is scheduled to be finalized, I'm going to say, the third quarter of this fiscal year. So it'll be like right after the new year and January to the March timeframe. We had the kickoff in, two weeks ago and the team came down. They, they actually, they collect a lot of administrative data, so they've already collected data from the county. But they drive around and they do visual validations of what they're seeing. So if it's like vacancy data, for example, they actually drove the entire region over three days and they invited different people from the community to ride with them and so they can get a sense of what's going on. So they'll go through another visit of that before the end of the calendar year. And then each time they come back to the steering committee and they say, this is what we're finding. Does this resonate with what you think is going on in the ground? And then in the January to March timeframe, we'll have the kind of final data on that.
Would it be possible to get some preliminary draft reports as they go through the process?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
That would be helpful.
Yep.
If I could, Ms. Jim. You covered water, green infrastructure. What about power and health? Health planning, health planning has been brought up in our strategic plan and we're, there's a general feeling that we're underserved here, but we haven't got the population to really economically pull, pull some of those medical services into the county.
Yeah.
But health planning, I didn't hear you mention it.
We haven't been involved in that space before. I think, I'd be open to exploring it. So I'll, I'll say a little bit about me. My background is in housing and human services. So I worked in the northern Shenandoah Valley at the Planning District Commission there for about seven or so years. And one of the interesting things from moving from the upper valley to here is that the health districts look really different. There, the health district was the same footprint as the PDC and it made it, and the CSB was too. Lots of these kind of person-centered organizations were the same footprint. So we did a ton of work together, not so much in the Richmond metro region. So yeah, I think it's something worthwhile to explore.
The demographics, we're getting older, healthcare becomes even.
Absolutely, yeah. And I know even in the comp plan meeting discussions, there was a discussion around, you know, response time of emergency services. I mean, all those things obviously become more important as, as we begin to think about the need for them in our own lives.
You might think about putting that into some scenarios around health plan?
Sure, yeah, we could look into that.
The only other area I had is, I think you mentioned it, is electrical power.
Yeah, the board has been asking about that a little bit more. When we talked with the board at a, I think it was the mayor, the June briefing about the Climate Pollution Reduction Plan, there's, kind of tips over into some work around solar and alternative energy sources and that kind of thing. And so again, I think it's one of those potential new spaces for us to move into. I will share that the General Assembly had legislation in the 2025 session. It didn't, it did not move out of committee, but there was a proposal to require regional energy resource plans to be able to identify, just like we do with water and solid waste and other types of infrastructure broadband, that kind of thing, like do we actually have enough for what, for what our projected demands are? So that'll play out certainly in the General Assembly in future sessions, but I think there's always an opportunity for us to be responsive. We would have to candidly think a little bit about kind of what's the competency, the staff's capacity that we would need. And it may be starting with a contractor to, to think about that. But it's, it's coming up in conversations, not just here in Powhatan.
Yeah, the scenario planning and trying to bring scenarios in that could really disrupt other areas of power, at least over the foreseeable future, I think has a potential of having a very significant impact in many of the areas of planning.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I'm curious what that future planning looks like if we, if we can run some data. A community like ours is not necessarily... A community like ours is not necessarily beating the doors down to bring in affordable housing. What does that look like if we're not with an aging community? How does that impact the systems and services moving forward?
Definitely has implications on the housing type, the types of housing.
Mr. Chairman.
Good.
So I do have one question. So, so we got these nine different regions. So, so for example, if you guys do a plan on like air quality, so Richmond's going to pollute a lot more than Powhatan. So when you go to make recommendations, you can't just make a blanket recommendation for everybody, just like with, you know, so-called climate change, China's the major polluter, you know?
Yeah.
If they're not going to do what we do to make the air clean, what can you do?
Yeah.
But it's also not fair to Powhatan to impose the same kind of emission limitations or guidelines on this county as you would on like, say, Chesterfield or Henrico because they have a lot more industry than we do.
Right. So almost with all of our plans, the strategies are local. So the issues are regional, but the strategies are local. I'll flip it to the hazard mitigation plan. Each one of the localities, there are 25 localities, that's why I'm going to talk about that one. The experience with natural hazards is different across the region. Even with that, you know, you've got communities that tend to be in that tornado belt or are along the fault line of the earthquake or even in the radon plume. So the mitigation strategies that we identify are unique to that jurisdiction, not to say that there's not overlap. And so we approach that the same way, whether it's transportation or air quality or whatever you. It's either a regional menu of solutions. It's, our organization, I should have mentioned this, has no authority. So we don't have the ability to enforce any kinds of strategies or solutions or recommendations. They're simply like a menu of options. Or in some cases, like hazard mitigation plan, because it's tied to your FEMA relief and insurance rates associated with FEMA, the mitigation strategies have to be adopted locally. And so the commission itself doesn't adopt the plan. The Powhatan County portion of that plan is adopted by you. And that's how we would approach the same thing with, with air quality. Because to your point, I mean, I think it was, was it last summer when we had like red sky because of New York and Toronto? I mean, and then there's the Ohio River that typically is contributing more to air quality than Hampton Roads is. I mean, there's those types of things that we have to take into consideration.
So when you say hazard, are you talking about like natural disasters as well? Because like, we're not that far from the coast, so a hurricane could come rolling through here, especially if it was strong and it made landfall, and it would affect the whole region.
Correct.
Not just our little area.
So hazard mitigation plan covers, I probably won't get them all, but it's hurricanes, tornadoes, landslides, extreme heat, extreme cold, flooding.
What are you doing to mitigate the heat?
Yeah, right, yeah. So in that instance, I mean, it might be recommendations about how to think about setting up cooling shelters. You know? We've got an exciting project happening that's a kind of a companion and it's not specific to natural hazards, but it's a resilience hub project to identify where we could stand up physical locations where people could go in the event of a disaster. It could be a cyber threat. I mean, it could be anything, but really thinking about what are the trusted places and spaces that people would go in the event of a disaster. Lessons learned from lots of different disasters across the country, but we know that when people don't know where to go, they stay at home. And that could be sometimes the safest or sometimes the most dangerous thing. And so how do we really think about how to put together those types of facilities? And then when we're not in disaster times, how do they get used to effectively serve the community? Kind of that answer here questionfully.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So is attainable housing taking the verbiage away from affordable housing? Is that the new?
You made the distinction.
I like the attainable one better.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, affordable has a connotation. In the affordable housing world, it means 80% housing affordable to the, to families that are earning 80% of median income. The reality is that I think it's up to 150% of median income are having a hard time, given the supply side of housing stock in the region. So attainable sort of across the continuum, yeah. And it's again, you know, I think one of the nice things about thinking about affordable housing on a regional scale is it doesn't mean that every locality should be figuring out how to provide every type of housing. There might be, and I think that there are some examples in this county where some sort of more dense development with, you know, kind of a mixed-use type or a, you know, different type of density works, but that's not the character of the whole county, just like you wouldn't expect to see, you know, five to 10 or lots in the downtown core of the city of Richmond. So when we think about it as a region, you can think about, you know, that spectrum of housing opportunity across the region. And it, in some ways, I think it lightens the load for each locality to have to figure that out on their end.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Something that in working with the Habitat housing study, we've stratified the housing market as to, in terms of affordable workforce and attainable, with the AMI going from as low as 60 up to 120.
Okay.
And definitely looking at the housing requirements of each of those, each of those state, those tiers. So hopefully that will be.
You're talking about the homeownership side specifically?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Just in terms of, at least how we're looking at it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it makes a lot of sense. I mean, the other part that's, solutions in urbanized areas that have, and again, I think Division State had talked about this, you know, that have infrastructure to support. I mean, you just can't, you just can't think about density without infrastructure. They have to go hand in hand. And so some solutions are non-starters in rural communities and some solutions are non-starters in urban communities, simply because.
Another thing we're doing is looking at community land trust as a mechanism.
Awesome.
To lower, lower entry cost at a market level. So I'm not sure whether your housing study will look at the community land trust as a concept. We have it in Virginia now, so.
Yeah, the market value analysis won't, but PHA's housing, or housing framework does identify that as a potential solution for some.
Any other questions for us?
I don't think so.
It looks like you're pretty busy.
I've got a couple of notes here to go back and talk to the team about. We can definitely make sure that there's a work that can come back and benchmarks with the market value analysis. But as far as the health planning energy, I, maybe we can talk a little bit more about what that could look like, health side in particular, near our time.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, your scenario planning process is a kind of an intriguing way to look at, look at it. In terms of the flexibility of the model to add, another, you, you guys come back and say, we need to add new scenario process and health and power. How does, how does the framework and its design?
Yeah.
Because it would throw everything else off. They're all interrelated, as you said.
Yeah.
Maybe in another time, you could talk, talk.
Yeah.
Mr. Tree.
I'll say a couple of things, and I think that that could be worthwhile to have longer conversation about. But the idea is that the model is dynamic in certain, I mean, so when you run it, a scenario or the impact of, you know, some sort of a policy decision, it's going to be based on whatever the inputs of the model are at that time. But our commitment, as part of our long-range transportation process, is that that model gets updated at least every five years. So we're in a window right now to update the transportation demand model, which is the primary functional output of the scenario planning tool. And so this would be the time, quite frankly, to be able to incorporate those other types of inputs or outputs, depending on how you want to think about it. I think the tricky thing with some of these is that it's, it's very easy to say, on this corridor, if we added a third lane for X amount of linear feed, what's that going to do to the congestion demand? Like, it's pretty easy to mathematically calculate that. It then becomes maybe a little bit easier to say, well, if we do that with X amount of material, what's that going to do to the runoff? Right, like, we have certain ways that we can pretty easily calculate the impacts. If we think about it from like a health perspective, there'd have to be some agreement about what those health drivers are. And that's where we've got to have more of that conversation.
So long has the model, your model's been designed to allow for easy addition of additional scenario?
Yeah, like, I can't, I can't imagine a situation, definitely not in the 2025, 26 update, but probably not in, I hate to say this, but probably not even in the next two runs, the next 10 years, where we'd be able to say, by doing this, the model says that the incidence of asthma in the region is going to go down. I mean, we're just not going to be able to make that acute of a change on something. But there are probably some other areas where we would be able to think about aging demographics and what infrastructure needs to be put in place to accommodate that population. So we, I am trying to be real, I guess I'm using those two examples by saying, there are some things that the model's just not going to be able to predict.
Awesome. It's been incredibly informative, thank you.
Sure.
I look forward to hearing some of the feedback.
Seems like you're pretty busy.
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's a fun job.
Have you dinner more than?
Well, I heard about dinner, so yeah. That's really why I shared with you.
That's the only reason we come to.
You know, it's Chinese, best in town.
Well, thank you all.
We're going to adjourn, I'll say this.
Lightly, lightly, thank you, thank you.
I'd like to call the order for the July 28, 2025 meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Supervisor McLung if he wouldn't mind doing the pledge allegiance, and I'll handle the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we thank you so much for this incredible opportunity just to serve and to help this incredible community. We ask tonight that you would help us remain humble and seek you first in all things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Do I have any formal requests to postpone agenda items or make any deletions or changes in the order presentation? Hearing none, do I have a formal approval?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? All right, moves us to county administrator updates.
Yes, thank you. We've got a couple of slides coming up on the screen, but I have three updates for you tonight. The first is a reminder that our first Friday's music series continues this week. The local band, The Biscuit Eaters, are performing this Friday night. The music starts at 6:00 PM. We have food and craft vendors that set up at 5:00 PM. And this park, this event is held in the Village Park. Next, our movies in the park series is at the halfway point in their season. August 15th is our next movie night with a showing of Minecraft, the movie. This is, this event is held at the La Crosse Field in Turner Park. That's the rectangular field right beside the county administration building. And we also wanted to let you know that National Night Out is an annual community building event in the United States that promotes law enforcement and community partnerships to make neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live. On Tuesday, August 5th, the Powhatan County Sheriff's Department will be hosting Powhatan's National Night Out at the same time that hundreds of other communities across the country will be participating in similar events. Powhatan's National Night Out starts at 5:30 and is centered around the Courthouse lawn.
All right, do I have any board updates? Hearing none, that'll move us to proclamations. Sir, did you have something, Mr. President?
I do indeed.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not for display on the board due to some restrictions we have in our bylaws in terms of board putting stuff up without approval. Handouts that were left at your place, Powhatan County Parks and Rec monthly report, and I asked for Megan Hiewald, the director, to make this available to everyone. I sit on the prac, and what I've been impressed with over the last two years, looking at this very report, is the significant improvement month after month and after month, year over year. And these numbers are beginning to, I think, show that. And I wanted to make sure that I call that to all of you as we get, get ready for budget again. It's, it's going to be upon us here shortly. And that Parks and Rec is doing a splendid job, and the facilities that we have are at 85 to 90% capacity all the time. And they're doing, doing excellent work. And I wanted to call everyone's attention to that. And we'll do, continue to do so as part of each of our monthly meetings to bring your attention to what practice, what Parks and Recreation is doing for this community. They, they figure prominently in our strategic plan, and I think we need to be aware, kept aware of the contribution that staff is making and that the, the, the health and well-being that are being, being provided for by Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Brings us to proclamations.
Yeah, we'd like to invite Chief Johnston up to introduce a special guest that we have with us this evening. Chief Johnston is going to introduce our guest and then read a proclamation. And then after the proclamation is read, Emma, we would ask that you and your family just remain close to the front of the stage here. The board would like to come down and greet you and take a picture. But we'll turn it over to Chief Johnston.
Great, good evening. Dave Johnston, Fire Chief here in Powhatan County. Incredible opportunity this evening to recognize something very special. This, this platform we have here tonight gives us the opportunity to recognize a member of our community. We're extremely honored to recognize Ms. Emma Stigall, and you're welcome to come on down whenever you'd like. Very special guest in the house tonight, and I want to tell you a little bit about why. So Ms. Stigall, she is a lifeguard at our Elizabeth Randolph Lewis YMCA right here down the street. And on June 19th, she had just stepped onto the lifeguard stand at the pool. And at that time, immediately upon stepping onto the stand, she realized that there was a child, a young child in distress in the pool, immediately jumped into action utilizing her training and everything that she's been to, to prepare for this. And this kind of made me think about, one of the things we often forget as a community is that lifeguards are part of our first responder chain. And I want to make sure we recognize that tonight. So thank you for all of your training and dedication to life-saving. So she initiated a Code Blue, which is the YMCA's opportunity to recognize this emergency, which then initiates the chain of survival. Immediately upon getting into the water, she quickly reached the young boy, and she was able to get him to his back and get him to the edge of the pool where she initiated life-saving measures, ultimately saving this child's life, making sure that we keep another young community member able to do great things within Powhatan County. So thank you so much for this opportunity. Again, your training took place, you put safety first, looked at some of the values that the YMCA recognizes with responsibility, and you had a responsibility that day to act, which you didn't hesitate and you did so. And then caring is another one of your values, and certainly you cared for this young man's life to make sure that it continued on the way it should. So thank you so much for all of your efforts. Powhatan County would like to read this proclamation that's dedicated to you this evening. Whereas the safety and well-being of our citizens, especially our youth, is of the utmost importance to the entire Powhatan County community. And whereas on June 19th, 2025, a young boy at the Elizabeth Randolph Lewis YMCA experienced a life-threatening emergency while in the swimming pool. And whereas Emma Stigall, a teenage lifeguard employed by the YMCA, immediately recognized the signs of distress, took swift and decisive action. And whereas through calm professionalism, proper training, and courageous response, Emma successfully rescued the child and provided critical care until further assistance arrived, preventing what could have been a tragic outcome. And whereas Emma Stigall's actions exemplify the highest standards of public service, personal responsibility, and community dedication. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes and commends Emma Stigall for outstanding bravery and life-saving efforts on June 19th, 2025, and extends its deepest gratitude for a job well-done and service to our community. This was adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, July 28th, 2025. Congratulations.
Any friends, family, co-?
Any friends, family, coworkers who'd like to come down, have a picture, build one? Come right up front here.
All right, that will bring us to our presentation.
So next on our agenda, we welcome representatives from GRTC who will provide updates on Palatine's microtransit program.
Good evening, board members. My name is Richard Troxel. I am a lead supervisor with GRTC. I'm supposed to have another director here with me today, but I think they had a traffic issue, so it looks like they're running a little bit late. So I'll handle this for the evening. We did bring a little presentation today to talk a little bit more about microtransit and what we offer for your jurisdiction. There we go. All right. So our presentation that we'll just talk quickly about, I introduce myself, we'll talk about the Palatine Zone profile, we'll do some ridership performance and other KPIs, talk a little bit about funding, and then next steps. All right. GRTC conducted a Richmond-Reggeman microtransit study in 2021. The study recommended 12 microtransit zones to be considered for implementation in five years. The five pilot zones were recommended for a phased implementation in one year, and DRPT awarded GRTC $4 million through a TRIP grant to help fund the three-year microtransit pilot program as of December of 2022. We're actually approaching our third year in that. GRTC obtained additional funds to support the implementation of the remaining pilot zones. And in March of 2023, GRTC developed an implementation and financial plan to guide the implementation phase of the microtransit pilot program. Okay. And let me step back here for a second. If those of you that aren't really sure what microtransit is, the simplest way to explain it is think of Uber or Lyft, and it's a type of service that GRTC offers. Most people know GRTC as the big buses that go up and down the street. This is more of an on-demand program where folks can request a ride through an app or calling our customer service zone in set times, and you can get a ride anywhere from point A to point B in specific zones, of which Palatine is now is one of those zones. Okay. We use different types of vehicles. We use what we call cutaways, which you see on the screen right there. We also use minivans, and then not in Palatine because it's too far away, but we do have electric vehicles that we use in some of our closer zones to the property where we can get them back and charge them if we need to. All right. It is, it's a shared technology-enabled form of public transportation that routes vehicles based on real-time passenger demand. You don't make reservations in advance. If you know you need a ride, you get on the app or you call customer service, say, I'd like to see if I can get a ride from point A to point B, and we see if there's a van available for you at that time. Okay. The customers will cross the rides when they're needed, and then services delivered curb to curb. We don't typically do door-to-door, which like, it's one of the differences between us and our paratransit service that we do offer in parts of the city. Okay. Currently, this here is a map of our existing microtransit zones. You can see at the top there, Ashland is one, Azalea was our very first zone, and Ashland and Azalea are very extremely, very popular. We doing well over 100 rides a day. Sandston over there includes Henrico and parts of Richmond to include also the airport. Cloverdale kind of goes up and down Broad Street where the GRTC fixed route ends near Chippendee Parkway. Microtransit picks up and shoots further down to, I can't think of the Boathouse area on Hull Street. Okay. Palatine there is rather large. Okay. This was the Palatine Zone up until June 29th of this year. Originally, this is kind of showing you the simple zone. We had it go from basically just a little bit west of here all the way down to the Walmart Supercenter. And then we kind of had a little island area over where Westchester Commons is located. And then you can see here from this map here where the different types of places people went to. They went to the community centers, municipal service, a bunch of folks used it for retail shopping, and we actually had students and staff use it to get to school. The current Palatine Zone as of today encompasses 264.4 square miles. It does, currently the zone does connect to a GRTC fixed route, the 1A, that it goes to the Walmart on a Midlothian Turnpike over in Chesterfield County. And we've actually extended the zone to include it, to allow people to connect to that, to either go into the city or come back from the city as they need. Okay. Here's a little map that kind of shows what was and the current zone. What ended on the 28th of June is the gray area, and we expanded the service to include the entire county as well as the Walmart over there where the 1A ends, and to also include the Johnston-Willis Chesterfield Town Center campus area. So there's a little bit of area there. So people can actually get a ride from Palatine to go to those areas and come back. And they can also catch the fixed route to get, like you said earlier, get back into the city. Okay. All right, just talk a little bit about ridership. Right now, this here you can see is a grid chart for your weekly ridership just here in Palatine. By the week, it shows, starting in April, you can see we had a little bit of a dip in May, not sure what that was about. We don't really have data for that. But you can see that we did pick up rides starting in June and through July to this point here. The data is only up to last Thursday because we had to pull it together, and we can't get data for the day we pull it. It has to be after the day, the day has to conclude before we can pull the data. So, but what I want to point out here, just keep in mind is, you'll see like, one example there says week nine and week nine. That's because June ended and July started in the same week. So that's why they broke it up. That's why it's two different colors. But you'll see, and it looks like not many people were in week nine of the green, but they're actually, if you combine the two, you'll see there was 29 folks in total in that week. For the month of June and July, we actually, when we started doing our, the farmer's market down here, we started coming out and doing outreach and talking to people, you know, handshakes and explaining the service, stuff like that. We had a lot of positive interaction and feedback from that outreach. And I, no real data other than to say that it coincides, but I attribute that as well as the expansion to why you see more rides, more leveled off as the weeks went on. This is our average daily ridership. So on average, for each week, there was an average of eight people in that week one, and then six, et cetera, as you go through. So you can see the number of folks that go through. You know, those weeks that only had three, four, and five, we know those customers. They are regular riders on this service. They know how to get the ride, they know where to get it, stuff like that. So we know them by name. But you can see also, like I said on the last track, that ridership did pick up a little bit, and we are seeing lots of new faces starting to use the service. So it is slowly but surely, it is, it is working, the expansion and the outreach. Okay. One of the things here that we wanted to show was, we have a goal. We want to have X amount, we want to try to have X amount of riders per hour, and our goal is 1.8. Let's round it up to two. Okay. And what we're seeing here over the history is we're averaging, actually, it may be one rider every two hours versus two every hour. So we're about a quarter where we want to be in the data on average. So our goal is to do what we, see what we can do working together to bring that number up to the 1.8 goal that we'd like to see. And again, I know I'm talking fast. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Just for your awareness, this is just some of the KPIs that we do take a look at at GRTC. We have a data team that kind of compiles this data and certain departments look at it. We look at completed trips. This is for every zone, not just Palatine. We look at the number of cancellations and no-show rate. The difference between a cancellation and a no-show is if I make a reservation and I go, I don't need it, and I take the time to cancel it, then we just call it a cancellation. But if I make a reservation and go, I have a better opportunity, I just kind of walk away from it and the van shows up, they wait five minutes, then they mark the person as a no-show. And so that's the difference between those two. We do look at the number of EV, meaning electric vehicle trips. We've tried it in Palatine. We can't keep a vehicle out here long enough to, it takes, it takes more juice to get to and from that we use in the zone. So until we find a recharging zone out here, we probably won't use it too often in the zone. We do look at monthly trips, how many riders, ridership we have there. We look at on-time performance. We want to make sure our people are doing what they need to do to get to your citizens to pick them up in a timely manner. We also look at shared versus unshared trips. This is, this is an on-demand shared service. So if I book a ride and then you go ahead and book a ride, and we're in the same area, we could very easily be picked up by the same van at the same, or similar time, going in the same direction. And so one of us, you know, will get on first and then et cetera. You'll get, the other one will get on, one will get dropped off, et cetera. So we'll share the ride. That's what they mean by ride share. Okay. We also look at the total chips, trips requested, not necessarily completed because sometimes our van is busy, we get requests, and so the van's not available. We do look at that data, and we factor that into looking for future needs for the zones. We also look at how people are booking their methods. Are they mostly calling in to customer service or are they using the app? For out here, it's about 50/50. Some, you know, half of them are using the app and half of them are calling customer service, and that's, you know, that's fine for right now. Okay. We also look at why people are using the service. Are they going to work? Are they using it to go to school? They just go into shopping, doctor's office, or sometimes they just say other. So we just kind of like to have an idea what the service is being used for. I'm not well-versed on it, but I think it actually has to feed back into one of our grants. We have to document that purpose. Okay. We also look at the wait time folks have to have for the van. So if I book a ride, and I'm, every time I book it, I'm waiting 45 minutes, we need to start looking at that, say, is there a way we can improve that? Do we need to, do we have the ridership that can justify us adding another van in the zone? Okay. We also look at wheelchair usage to see if there's a certain population that is using it more, or there's a certain rider that needs it more. Right. You know, as is everything in life, we get, look at the cost per passenger trip, you know, are we getting what we need based on the funding that we're using? Okay. And as well as how far people are traveling. With this expansion, we have really increased the size of the zone. So there's, I've actually driven here, you could actually, from one point to the other point, it could take as much as an hour in rush hour. So that could cause some receipts unavailable, van unavailable, if that were to happen a lot. So we just want to kind of watch that data and keep track of that. Okay. All right. This is a slide I'm not too well-versed on. We get a lot of refunding from DRPT through a grant and ARPA is another one too, a federal grant. I think initially, we were estimated to have an operating cost of little over half a million dollars. And through lots of pain and effort and skill, we've actually made it to about $200,000 a year. So there is a cost savings to, you know, maybe add some things to the zones that we need to. Okay. We are looking for future funding and to coordinate with the county to develop a funding model for sustainability and also need, a need for it to apply for the TRIP, TRIP grant, especially for the next funding. We all know the current political climate and where funding has been taken away from a lot of agencies and things like that. So we are, we are also a victim of that in certain areas. So I see some pens and pencils. I can leave them up there if you need.
I do have one question for you, sir. First of all, thank you. I saw you guys have a booth now at the farmer's market.
Yes.
So, so that's great because one of the, one of the concerns I got from one of our communities here, 55 and older, is they didn't even know about the service. So I appreciate you guys setting up that booth in the farmer's market. And I'd like everybody to know, if you have questions, they do have a booth over there. But do you guys use any other kind of mechanisms to get the word out in the community?
Yeah, and we'll cover that here in just a little bit, some of the areas that we are, we are out there with. But yes, to answer your question real simply, yes, we do have others. Ms. May here is actually part of our marketing team, so she's a good person to talk with as well. Okay. Moving on to here, we're going to talk about what our next steps are for the service as a whole, as well as here in Palatine. We are currently in the process of developing a strategic plan for LINK service. And for those that don't know, I should have mentioned this earlier, LINK is GRTC's name for the type of service called microtransit. Okay. So that's just the name we give it, but the type of service is microtransit. And you'll see microtransit all over the country being used. We just happen to call it LINK. But yeah, we are working with a Foursquare vendor to help us develop a strategic plan. And we'll talk a little bit more of that in just a second here. And then our also next steps is to work and develop more targeted outreach. The farmer's market's working great, some of our other things, but we also want to see other areas that we can maybe move into to get the word out there, and not just Palatine and all of our zones. For, with respect to the strategic planning, the goal with the vendor is to help us develop a purpose statement and goal. Make it more professional, develop a set of metrics to track performance and assess the extent to which the service is meeting set goals, develop service performance standards, and develop guidelines for intervention when zones are not meeting expectations. Okay. So we have some zones that are just, we can't, we can't move people fast enough. And then we have some zones like Palatine that we have, we have some vans sitting, sometimes just waiting for people to use it. I'm hoping that as we do more outreach, we can change that and then the van is just moving back and forth. Because that's, that's what we like to see. Okay. Just real quick there, you can see there, these are, I talked about it earlier, the type of vehicles we use. We use minivans, Chrysler minivans currently. We use the passenger vans when we can. They're basically for transit. We have the EVs that are for transit. We also have gasoline models that we use occasionally as well. And then we have the cutaways, which is basically what that picture there is. We call that a cutaway or a body-on-chassis. A lot of people call them church-like vans, the vans a lot of churches use. So. All right, so with respect to the outreach program here, yes, we are definitely doing the farmer's market, and we love being out there. These are photos from that area. We doing, we do social media with respect to Facebook, and I, pardon my, one of you all has posted on there, on your Facebook there about LINK, and we're greatly appreciative of that. We do have information on our GRTC website. It's basically ridegrtc.com/LINK, and you can get, you can get all the information you need about it. We do have news media coverage. ABC Channel 8 coverage has done it. I see that Channel 12 is here, and Channel 6 has covered other zones as well. So we do get the media coverage out there. Our marketing team does a great job working with them, and they do a great job covering our zones and such. We do have an option for emailing our account holders to let them know things are coming up. We did that with the Palatine expansion as well as the Sandston expansion. We made changes to the Sandston zone. So we shout out emails and texts to our account holders that use the app. We have also seen print media doing it, one of them specifically the VEN, I think it's a local print. I think it's a local print media outlet. They've done a nice article on us. And then just recently, coming up, the Rotary Club has asked us to come out, something like this. Do a little presentation to them and educate their folks as well. So we're trying to do stuff. If there's things that you guys think we could do, we could take advantage of, please let us know. We're looking for ideas and Ms. May has something she'd like to talk about real quick.
Good afternoon. My name is May Barboza. I am the community outreach for GRTC and I'm very happy to be here to see more faces. We're very excited to be in the Powhatan market. Every week we have different customers and a lot of them, like you said, they're not aware of it. So that is one of my goals this year. We are working right now very close with the health department. The free clinic is very excited about the LINK as well. Vet offices are very excited to this. We're having some, we're going to have some, with the social services, we're going to have groups for 50-plus in September, which is going to be not only for LINK, but they're going to offer this information for them as well. So I'm going to come here and we're going to have all the information. We're going to have a table of information as well. We are doing some connections with some churches, which I believe then is one of the better ways to communicate with our communities. And we're going to be in the Festival of the Grapes. So one of the things that I'm calling you guys and everybody here is to let me know where would be a good place to be. Why? Because we want to participate. We want the community to know that we are here to serve and to grow this service. And I'm going to be outside when we finish. So I have some cards with the LINK. If you guys want to scan it in the back and download the app, that way you have more information about LINK. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions?
I want to go back to funding. The pilot was a three-year pilot. We've finished one year, right? So there's two more years of the pilot. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're actually closing out, we're getting ready to close out year two.
Year two?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And the trip funding, is that, we have to match it? Talk to me a little bit more about funding.
So funding.
I'm sorry, this is our director, Frank.
Sorry. My name is Frank Adaco and I'm the director of planning and scheduling at GRTC. In terms of funding, if I may go to that slide. Are we able to make it go back? On the funding slide.
Funding, you go back?
There we go. All right.
Thank you.
So if you look at the first grant, the current funding source that we have is the demo grant, which is 80% being matched by the state. And then we have 20% coming from the COVID relief funding. So that is the match, right, the 80/20.
Okay, the application for the next funding cycle.
Right.
Talk to me a little bit about that.
So that is.
I'm trying to gauge what you're looking for the locality to do and so that we can be prepared for it.
All right, so let me give a broader picture. As you can see, the demo grant is for that three years, right? Currently, if you look at how much we are operating at, it's lower than what we expected. Because the numbers that we initially used to calculate the cost was, you know, it was a range. We had a lower end and then a high end. I think, I believe it was between one to three vehicles. We use a higher end to calculate the cost. Currently, we have one vehicle within the zone, so that's why you see the cost right there. In terms of the next funding cycle, we are looking at trip, trip is a five-year step down, right? So you're going to be marching. I don't remember what the percentages are, but over the five periods, the longer that the years go by, the higher that the match is. In terms of what we are looking from, what we'll be looking, are the localities to do is to continue to coordinate with you to see what the most feasible funding module is going to be.
So when would we be having to start playing, do some planning or discussion around that? What budget cycle are you looking at?
Yeah, it's a good question and I think that the value in the pilot is we have an opportunity to prove that transportation services is needed for Powhatan.
Right.
So the rider data that GRTC is showing is valuable data, especially if we're seeing that rider data increase. DRPT is not a grant funding source that is only accessible to GRTC. We know that a lot of our regional neighbors tap that funding source for transportation programs. About a year ago, when we were talking about microtransit, we talked a lot about the Hanover-Dash transportation system. That's run by Hanover County. It's funded by a DRPT grant. So if we can prove proof of concept with our GRTC pilot, we would have the opportunity to be competitive for our own transportation grant.
Yeah, and that is pretty much right. Because for the trip next funding cycle, the only way we can get in is to see how successful this pilot is going to look like, right, for the future. So we can be able to apply for that. And if we're not able to prove that, you know, we are successful with what we have now, then that is going to not happen and then we'll probably have to look at other alternatives. Because even at the federal level, any fund that you look for, you have to find a way to match it. Just like you stated, you know, early on. But for now, with the pilot, like you said, we are currently in the second year. So we have, what, a year and a half, probably like a year and a half to go. So maybe, you know, this is a time to start having that conversations for future funding sources.
Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Probably from a standpoint of the way the program was set up, three years, but from my perspective, if the program just started July 1, in terms of covering the entire county, the area that you were showing that we started was significant, very limiting.
Right.
To utilization. And now that it's the entire county, I hope that some consideration can be given to when you're starting that assessment of whether what we're doing is worthy of continued funding. Because you just really started a program that's really viable in this county.
It's, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I don't know if, you know, that is how they are going to conceive that. You know, because we've started with a very small zone. But I think one of the lessons that we have learned with this microtransit is that you have to tinker with the zones to see what works. And that is what we have done with you all. We started with a, you know, very small area. We realized that we were having issues, you know, ridership wasn't there. Okay, now let's take a step back and see if we can expand to the entire county, right? So now we have about, what, six months to see what the numbers are going to look like. Like I said, then we will get back to the conversation of success and see if we are meeting those goals and then we can take it from there.
If you could, real quickly, just refresh what you said. What is the threshold of success? How many rides per day, per month?
1.8 per revenue hour. So the hours that we're out there, we like to have an average of 1.8. Let's round it up to two.
Yeah, so if you are looking at that on a daily basis, looking at how long the vehicles are out there, we're probably looking at about 24 riders a day.
24 riders?
Yeah.
That's what we'd like to see.
Yeah. If you use that rider pair revenue hour of 1.8, looking at the vehicles out there for what, like 13 hours? So if you multiply that, you are somewhere around 24 riders.
Help me with the distinction, riders versus trips.
Trips is, a trip is an origin to a destination. And riders are the number of people on the vehicle between the trips, their trip starting point to its endpoint.
So if May and I could do one trip, we could be going to the same place and that's one trip, but it's two riders. So that would, the two riders would count towards your goal.
Yeah, but you can also have one person doing one trip. You have one person on that vehicle moving from point A to point B. That is a trip.
So if I take a trip from here to Johnston Willis Hospital, I'm there for two or three hours for whatever appointments and then I call and want to come back.
That will be your second trip.
One rider, two trips?
Yes, correct, yep.
So the one rider is not, that's, I still need to get to 1.8 per hour?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a fairly significant threshold that we need to get to.
Yeah, yeah, and I, you know, I think that's why they talked about outreach. Because the goal is to try to establish a comprehensive outreach plan. The focus this time around, just like you said, with this expansion, we want to focus on developing outreach strategies that can be boosted locally. So we're trying to find local resources here to help us push the message out.
Well, we did meet with some of your folks on a team meeting.
Yeah, I was on a call with you.
Talked about marketing and how we could go about raising awareness. And I know, Katie, you were taking a lead role on that and I assume that that's moving along, even to the point of having a totally new kickoff for this program sometime in the near future.
Right, right, yeah. I was on that call with you.
Yeah, there are a number of locations in this county that you could set up a booth.
Right.
And see lots of folks.
Okay.
I, we tease a little bit, if you want to meet your neighbor, you go to the parking lot at Food Line or you go to the transfer station. I'm not suggesting you set up a booth at the transfer station, but there's a lot of traffic there to raise awareness.
And I believe that goes back to the point that I said, that you all know the zone better than all, you know the county better than we do. So that's why we want to come to you to show us, you know, what can we do to get this information out. One of the things we also want to do is to, once we identify the strategies for outreach, I think I mentioned that on the call to you all, is to develop standard metrics that we can use to measure these strategies that we are adopting. So how do I know one strategy is working and the other is not? The only way I can do that is to be able to have a metric that is showing me if it's working or not. So that is key. And just like you said, I think, Katie, we have started that conversation with you all and we are going to get together to try to see, you know, how best we can work with you all to get these numbers up.
I hope that we can get to a point where we have a plan that's written down, that we understand our role and GRTC LINK understands its role, that it's well-understood. If we don't do that, it won't get done.
I agree with you and that's why I talked about the comprehensive plan that we want to kind of document, you know, and elaborate plan that we can use that.
Okay, the next critical question, if I could, Ms. Chairman. What's the date that that plan would be done?
So we just started the conversation with you all. We need to have another sit-down and develop all of these strategies with timelines and then we will be able to let you know exactly what the timeline looks like for implementation.
Do we have a date?
No, we haven't said a date for us to meet to kind of talk again. Because on that call, there was a list of places that you guys all talked about where we can set up. But I think for me, that plan is more than just listing places. It is identifying strategies that can work within these places. So that is what we talked about, developing a plan and then we can work off that. So once we get together with you all, we can have a comprehensive timeline for you.
Yeah, I think your line of questioning is appreciated, you know.
Oh, no.
If we're deep into the pilot, there is a sense of urgency. I think that the county, we worked on a strategic plan over the last year and a half and transportation emerged as one of the needs that we knew existed in the county. So there's urgency around making good use of this pilot, demonstrating the data, demonstrating the need, and then being able to be competitive for future grant funding that GRTC won't help us with. So yeah, I appreciate the sense of urgency and I think it's something that we on the county share with the GRTC folks.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
All right, well, yeah, thank you all very much, yeah.
All right, that'll move us to our public comment period. And before we get rolling into this, I do want to remind everybody, we've got about five names signed up here on our public comment sign-in sheet. I do want to remind you that we do have three public hearings on the Pocahontas Landmark Center, the Howard rezoning, and then the countywide subdivision ordinance. So if you're interested in talking on any of those three and your name is on this list, please let me know once I call that. We'll hold those comments until the public hearing for those. First I have is Rena Fisher. Yeah, I would wait, please. Thank you. Elmore Cook. Okay. Simon Wong. Okay. David Anderson. All right, we got one.
David Anderson, 2366 Belkrast Circle, Powhatan. This is the first meeting I've attended since I wrote a check for my property tax bill. And like most citizens, I assume they saw a significant increase like I did. And it got me to thinking about next year's budget and what we can do about next year's budget. And in my view, the best time to think about next year's budget is always today. Anything we do in February or March, to me, is kind of nibbling around the edges because everything's kind of mostly baked by that time. And so the question I really think for the board, I respectfully would ask this question is, do you believe that you've created a sense of urgency with the county administration and with the school board for next year's budget? A few months ago, Mr. Kenny gave us a history lesson back to 2014 about some of the issues facing the schools. The previous board supervisors publicly stated many times that the school board budget was unsustainable, and that's a quote, unsustainable. The county administration in last year's budget stated on page 38, "Powhatan County must strategically, must strategically manage its long-term financial well-being by reducing expenditures." And so I'll go back to the question about creating a sense of urgency. Has the board created a sense of urgency to reduce expenditures? And has the board created a sense of urgency to make the school board budget more sustainable? I firmly believe if you create a sense of urgency and get people moving and thinking, that they'll be more creative, they'll be more engaged, and they'll come up with better solutions than what we were faced with this year. Otherwise, we're going to all end up writing the same kind of check that we wrote a month ago. I appreciate your time and thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Judy Oliver.
Judy K. Oliver, 4372 Three Bridge Road. And I come here representing the Parks and Rec. July is Park and Rec Celebration Month. And as we celebrate our park and recreation professionals and how they improve the lives of people in our community, I do want to call out those people and recognize them publicly. We have a very committed staff. Megan Heatwall, Director, who is here today. Jean G. Jones, the Recreation Coordinator. Blake Campbell, the Athletics Coordinator. Tori O'Neil, the Recreation Aid. Hannah Solomon, the Recreation Programmer. Philip Huffman, Parks and Rec Maintenance Worker. Alvin McCully, also Parks and Rec Maintenance Worker. Erin Jones, Parks and Rec Maintenance Worker. These folks maintain our fields and have really improved things. And Sarah Soldat, the Parks Farmer's Market Manager. Here in Powhatan, the Parks and Recreation Programs are essential to the community health and well-being, one of your all's key agenda items, I know. Helping to cultivate lifelong friendships, memories, family bonds that hold people together and bring memories and lifetime friendships. Not to mention the benefit of being active. Just wanted to highlight to you, the monthly average of visitors to the Pocahontas Landmark Center is approximately 2,345. I don't know exactly, but I don't know that three years ago, we even had indoor programming at the Pocahontas Landmark Center. So the growth has been tremendous. We hope that everyone will register with Parks and Rec through your MyRec account. And anyone here who doesn't already have one, I have the QR code to be able to do so. Then you will receive monthly calendars as well as reminders of special events. Also, look for coming announcements about opportunities to meet and greet the PRAC team. We are going to be out and about at different locations in the county, giving residents the opportunity to give us feedback, ask questions, and give input into future programming. So thank you, and have fun at Parks and Rec.
Thank you. All right, that'll close our public comment period. And if you want to run us through the consent, please.
For the consent agenda tonight, item A is a minutes approval from the March 24th regular meeting. Item B is a budget resolution. This resolution deappropriates a little over $288,000 in unused bus lease funds and appropriates funds from equipment sales, insurance recoveries, and applies this to fire equipment, skid steer, and vehicle repairs. Item C is a budget resolution. This resolution appropriates grant funds for opioid outreach, emergency supplies, and other donations for their intended purposes. Item D is a budget resolution. The clerk of the Circuit Court received a little over $46,000 in new state funding to create a part-time position supporting a new expungement law. This resolution appropriates those funds. Item E is a resolution establishing emergency management designations. This resolution updates emergency management leadership roles to be based on position, not individual. Item F is a resolution acknowledging and agreeing to comply with all VDOT land use permit regulations and conditions. This resolution formally acknowledges Powhatan's agreement to comply with all VDOT permits and regulations and was requested by VDOT. And item G is a resolution authorizing abatement payment for a disabled veteran. Under Virginia law, veterans with a 100% service-connected disability qualify for a real estate tax exemption. And a citizen who meets these requirements is owed a refund over $10,000, which requires board of supervisors approval.
Any questions on any of the consent agenda items?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Will, could you explain to me more the sale of equipment and lease proceeds from buses? I don't, I don't understand that.
So in fiscal year '25, the Board of Supervisors approved, we call it debt lease, but it's, it's debt funded. We purchased buses through debt. We're taking that amount of money and rolling it into the fiscal year '26 debt issuance. But the school is purchasing fewer buses than they anticipated last year. So we're taking 288,000 plus out of that debt request and reducing it by that amount.
And that money goes?
It just comes out of the debt issuance. Instead of, instead of asking for $288,000 in debt, we'll remove that from the debt issuance that we're asking Davenport to issue on behalf of the county.
Oh, so it's reduction of debt, okay, okay. And other county vehicles, I think you gave a list, and fire department equipment. Could you be a little more specific?
So this year, we sold a backhoe that had been at the Mitchell Road Convenience Center. We sold it to Caterpillar. It was, they were interested in the parts. We're taking that money and applying it to a couple of items that were in our capital maintenance program, including some fire equipment, a skid steer for facilities and utilities, and some vehicle repairs.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions? I hear motion.
A motion to, to approve the consent budget as, as published.
Second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, pass this by both. Brings us to appointments.
Tonight, we have one appointment to the Community Policy and Management Team for the parent representative role, and one reappointment application is included in your agenda packet.
I would like to move to reappoint Kathy James to the Powhatan Community Policy and Management Team, which is known as CPMT. This is a two-year term as the parent representative for the county, and we do appreciate you volunteering to re, be reappointed to this committee. Is she here?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, brings us to new business.
All right, item A under new business is a resolution authorizing the execution of the Community Services Board Performance Contract. And Mr. Toby Fritz, who's the Executive Director of the Goochlin-Powhatan Community Services Board, is here to present on this item.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Toby Fritz. I'm with the Goochlin-Powhatan Community Services Board. And for any of you who may not be familiar, the Community Services Board is in the state of Virginia, the local provider for mental health, substance use, and developmental disability services. So for this evening, I'm just here briefly to talk about two things. Mr. Higgin, you mentioned our new contract is, is in front of you. The State of Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services prepares a contract for us. This one is for fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. It is a lot similar to the previous version. Some of the changes for this year really revolve around some of the initiatives that the state is putting together around data. New electronic systems for data, some new measures. But in general, this is the contract, the same contract that we've been working on for a couple of years. That's the contract. And also, just wanted to give you a little bit of a brief update on where we are in our CSB. So I have some data here in front of you on our PowerPoint, just to highlight the, some data specifically to Powhatan County. So there were 704 unique residents, Powhatan County residents, served in all of our services. 25,033 unique different services that occurred in the past fiscal year. The data on the right gives you a little bit more of a breakdown. It shows you that 45%, 46% of our services for these folks were in our clinic here in this building, and 34% were at the Goochlin Clinic serving Powhatan residents. Some folks that perhaps chose to go to that side of the river, live closer, for whatever reason. And shows you the rest of the breakdown there for some folks that participated in telehealth, some folks that had services in their, in their home or other setting. Some highlights from the past year, we launched, relaunched our Pathways Program, which is for recovery for mental health and substance use services. We had our developmental awareness and talent show, which was our first developmental awareness show that we had. It was a well-attended and 13 tables of services for the local area. So that was great awareness event. Clean audit, we were on budget. Some of the things that, just in terms of highlights, we had a 4% increase in the number of people we served. Well, we had a 4, a tenth, a four tenths of a percent increase in our budget. So a little bit more efficiency there. Some of the state measures, the state has a lot of measures, but seven of the key measures that they give us on a dashboard, we exceeded the state goals, state targets, and all seven of them. And one of them significantly was for activities daily living, and it measures progress. And we exceeded those standards for both adults and youth. So we are particularly proud of those accomplishments. So for the coming three fiscal years, we are, we have a strategic plan that we put together in six different areas: communication, growth and development, community partnerships, financial sustainability, service delivery, and staff development. And what we're doing is really looking to be very intentional about what we're doing, you know, very efficient with the resources that we've been allocated from the state and from a local environment. And also looking to not only communicate about what we're doing, but find intentional ways to grow. Looking at this coming year, there are a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. There are, first of all, the state of Virginia, the Department of Medicaid, Medical Assistance, is going through a redesign of the Behavioral Health Services. That'll be launched in June, I'm sorry, July 1st of 2026. So that's one thing that is going to affect what we're doing. There's a lot of talk among the CSBs in Virginia and the state on looking at a certified community behavioral health clinic, which is an evidence-based model that is delivered elsewhere in the nation. Those two things will give us opportunities to pull down more Medicaid dollars to help offset the cost of some of our services. So, you know, being intentional about looking at growth, you know, this is, those two things are really going to be able to help us pull down additional dollars to support the residents of Powhatan County without an impact on local budgets. And of course, we're, you know, that will be while we're delivering, you know, the statute-required services and looking at, you know, the latest changes in the budget related to Medicaid eligibility, understanding how that impacts us. Moving forward, you know, we really want to emphasize collaboration, which is part of the strategic plan, and, you know, having events that really promote, you know, community collaboration and involvement. One of the things we have scheduled coming up is an event that we're going to be hosting on the other side of the river. We had, back in January, we had a recovery kickoff celebrating mental health and substance use recovery. We're doing a similar event, but over a Goochlin facility on August 23rd. And we're partnering with the school district to offer a training October 20th related neuroscience and self-regulation. So if you're interested in that topic, please let me know. I think Dr. Tighgan has some extra seats available in her, in her large, beautiful high school auditorium. And I mentioned some of the, the, the things that we're looking at for this current year, some challenges that we are experiencing in funding. We lost some, some grant money. It wasn't significant, $62,000 last year. This year, there has been some, just as of today, I learned the possibility of getting some additional federal dollars that we might be able to get them. Instead, we were told about two months ago that we would lose them. So we're dealing with some, you know, changes on, on that. And again, focused on service development, looking at ways that we can partner with our community members and get that out there. So we'll be looking at ways to develop collaboration and bring in additional resources from outside. And we're excited to see equipment finally move in to our new facility. No dirt's been moved yet, but the equipment is there. So we're excited to see that get underway in the next couple of weeks. So that's the state of the Goochlin-Powhatan Community Service Board. Any questions I can, can answer?
Have you seen a, I guess, a rise in mental health cases? When you, when you, when you look at, I guess, the foot traffic in, in your facilities and the needs and things like that, is mental health probably the number one thing that you're, you would, if you could put your finger on one thing?
You know, it's kind of hard to say just one thing, but yeah, I think that a lot of that 4% increase was in the mental health outpatient program.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
And probably Toby, a question for you and also for Will. Coordination between CSB and the opioid program that we've got, could you, either of you enlarge on that? What's the coordination there?
Sure, I'll start, and then Toby can chime in. So yeah, the regional partnership grant that we are in our second year of opioid partnership grant that Powhatan, along with Chesterfield, Colonial Heights, and Petersburg joined in and received, is funding two positions in the CSB. So Jordan Schellen is their outreach coordinator, and they've also hired a peer support specialist that's funded from that grant.
So two staff, okay.
Yeah, and some of the great work that comes out of that is just a additional partnership with the Emergency Services Solutions, where we, when, when there is an emergency call with somebody who's had an incident with drugs and alcohol, we, they give us, you know, get permission and then reach out to us, to our peer, who follows up with the person and, you know, make sure that they have the resources, gets them connected, engaged with counseling. So there are a lot of things that are going on in the county, you know, really evidence-based work to, to connect folks to care.
One other thing, if I could, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite you back at least twice a year to continue to report on the statistics that you listed in your presentation, to come back and keep us abreast of what progress and what you're, what you're doing specifically for Powhatan County.
Yes, sir.
But if it's okay with my colleagues and with Will, I would, I'd like to make sure that we invite Mr. Fritz back to, to talk to us again soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B under new business is Resolution R 2025-46. This is referring a potential zoning ordinance amendment to the Planning Commission. And Mr. Ligon Webb, our planning, oh, sorry, yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution R 2025-39, authorizing the execution of, of the Community Services Board Performance Contract. All in favor? You oppose? Motion carries, five vote, sorry. Go ahead.
No, thank you. Yeah, so Resolution R 2025-46 is a referral for a zoning ordinance amendment, and Mr. Ligon Webb is here to provide an overview.
Hello, Board, just a quick overview. This is a resolution for referrals to the Planning Commission related to rural event venues. There are five specific requirements that rural event venues currently have to meet in the zoning ordinance to qualify for, they can apply for conditional use permit. And as you notice in the resolution, one of the things is we'll keep the 10-acre minimum, but we want the Planning Commission to look at. This is, this is driven by a couple folks in the community have inquired about a rural event. One's a very large property. Their issue was they might do some amplified outdoor music. The other one's a little bit smaller, want to do a very small sort of events, very casual, but the property would be a little less than 300 feet from a residential dwelling. Both seem like pretty reasonable requests, and the thought was, again, to keep that minimum 10 acres. And if you wanted to modify those, those five requirements, other than the 10 acres, that you could do at the CUP. Now, we're not talking about people who have existing CUPs. I guess if they want to come in and modify something, that would be allowable, but I don't, that's not really where we're going with this. As I see it, it's really these two that, from my perspective, were a pretty reasonable request. And, you know, when you do the CUP, obviously, you can write the conditions to be very specific, and when maybe they could do outdoor amplified music, certain times, decibels, and things like that, I would expect. So that, that's the reason behind it. Planning Commission just took a brief look at it last month, and we'll dig into this in the next month, next week as well, and get back with some recommendations.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Ligon. So when you're talking about an ordinance modification, you're not talking about, like, reducing the acreage? Like, you can, it's still got to be 10 acres with the loud music. You can't, like, do it on five or seven as far as being able to modify even with the CUP, correct?
Right, we're not talking about the minimum acreage. But the other items could be modified on a case-by-case basis. So that, that's the idea.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm looking forward to seeing what the Planning Commission has to come back with.
Great, thank you.
Any, any other questions or motion on the floor? Go ahead.
Top of that, dash 46.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, pass this by both.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, to ask Ligon, on that, coming back to us with, from the Planning Commission, when can we expect that? We didn't say any.
It's in the pending phase, so it's possible it could take two more sessions. So I think but most likely I think we can, we can finish it next.
Thank you.
All right. Next is item C. This is Resolution R 2025-47, adopting the 2025 Water-Wastewater Master Plan. And Mr. Brett Heim with Duberry Engineers is here to present.
All right. I appreciate everyone's time. Oh, there we go. Okay. Appreciate everyone's time. Happy to present on this subject again. We've been hard at work for a little over a year now with the county administration, been working pretty closely with the utilities department, and then we've also solicited input from zoning and planning and economic development. So for those who aren't aware of what this is, just a brief overview of, of what the Water and Wastewater Master Plan is, what its purpose is, and then what we've accomplished to date, and then I'll hit a couple of the high points on the master plan before I present some new information that was requested by the board at the last, at the last meeting for this. So the, really, the purpose of this master plan is to provide a roadmap for water and wastewater improvement projects for the next 20-plus years. It's meant to be a tool that the county uses and adopts. It's meant to be flexible. It's meant to be something that can change as, as, you know, economic development in the county changes or as different growth areas pop up. And so really, it's going to be, you know, dependent on the growth within the county, whether or not this, this plan is implemented. And so it's also a communication document that speaks to what, how, how the county is intending to support growth in the county from a utilities perspective. And then really, it's a document that provides information on the costs of, of those future improvements and when those costs would hit in a, in the timeline of things. So for today, again, we just talked about the purpose, so check that one off already. We're looking at some of the milestones that we've already completed next. We'll talk a little bit about what the demands were for water and sewer use in the county over the next 20 years. And then we will also look at some of those improvements at a very high level. And then lastly, I want to hit the implementation, some of the questions that came up in our last meeting. So where we, what we've done to date, we, we kicked this off in March of 2024, and then we circled back up with economic development, zoning, and planning, utilities, and then the county administration to identify potential areas within the county that they wanted to target for growth, that they knew that there was interest in from developers. And from that, we developed the, you know, essentially the, the water and sewer usage over the next 20 years. And so that's what we call our demand projections. Through the fall and into late 2024, we were building the water and wastewater model and recalibrating it based on your current conditions within the county. From that model calibration, we were actually able to, or we're, and based on the growth that we anticipate in the county, we developed future scenarios of infrastructure sewer, water and sewer projects that would support the growth within the county. We presented the initial draft report to the county in early 2025, and then sent a revised copy to the county in April. We, we had a couple of meetings with the board in April and in May, and presented some, you know, we went really into the weeds, I would say, with some of the different aspects of the, the water and wastewater master plan. So today, the hope is that we'll accept the master plan and, and, and be able to start implementing it. So just a quick overview of the water and sewer service areas and, and, and growth areas that, within the county, there is obviously the Flat Rock area closest to the county, county line, and that, that goes along 60 to the west. And then the courthouse area. In the, in the Flat Rock area, this is served by the Public Utilities Department from both the water and sewer perspective. And then in the courthouse area, water is provided by Aqua Virginia, and sewer service is provided by Public Utilities here in the county. And then the Route 711 area is the Founders Bridge Utility Company in that area, but is, has been identified for growth in the future. So just a quick reminder of where we landed with these water demand projections and sewer, sewer demand projections. Right now, your existing max day demand is about 600,000 gallons per day. By 2045, with the growth and with the, that we've identified, we anticipate it being closer to 2.2 million gallons per day. And then on the sewer side of things, this is in terms of average day demands, which are about, you can think of water and sewer demands, the, to, to get from an average day to a max day in water, you would multiply by two, and then the same is true in sewer. So if you want to try and draw some parallels there, even though they're not quite the same, you can think about it that way. So on, on the sewer side of things, currently, you're around 0.125 million gallons per day between the two different, or between three different service areas. And then by 2045, we anticipate that to be about 0.862 or 860,000 gallons per day. So I'm just going to hit kind of the, the big picture water and sewer improvements. Again, we got into the weeds a little bit about, on some of these projects and stepped through the different time steps, but essentially, we had different maps for different time steps within the county. What you see here is essentially the end of the planning period in 2045, the Flat Rock area, what we would anticipate for the water system improvements to look like throughout that time period. And so the, the big kind of question that, that a lot of the, the master plan hinges on is, is, you know, where is the water coming from? And so I know that the county administration is in public utilities, has been in talks with, you know, neighboring counties to, to identify those sources. But this essentially shows, shows the major transmission project of pulling water from a neighboring county, either to, from the north, from Henrico County, or potentially an interconnection on the Robius, to the Robius Zone in Chesterfield County. And then on the wastewater side of things, you know, the, the major improvements that we identified were expanding of the flat, of the Dewtoy Creek wastewater treatment plant. We also recommended taking the Fighting Creek wastewater treatment plant offline and pumping it to Dewtoy Creek to consolidate nutrient, nutrient credits, as well as to avoid having to continue to maintain an aging wastewater treatment plant and having to split time with staff between those two different facilities. And then one of the projects that we're still evaluating was this Dewtoy Creek Outfall relocation. That, that's kind of hinging on input from DEQ and, and information or in, in coordination with them. So from a very high level, those were the, you know, the major projects that we identified. And then we looked at implementation, which is kind of where a lot of the questions landed was, how, you know, how do we, what, what are the dollars going to, going to look like to, to the county over the coming years? And so we put together these tables, and, you know, really, they show, again, dependent on where the growth is, on the water side of things, we're looking around 68 million over the next 20 years. And then on the wastewater side of things, closer to, what is that, 60, 70, 80, 80 million. Not all the projects are contingent or, or necessarily, potentially necessary. It really just depends on where the growth is within the county and, and how the growth is supported within that. And then, you know, again, answering some of the bigger questions like, do we need to relocate the outfall to Dewtoy Creek based on regulatory recommendations and requirements? And where is the water, where are we going to be able to provide water from? Which of our neighboring counties are we going to be able to get water from? And so under scenario one, this was essentially assuming that we were, that the county was able to obtain water from neighboring Chesterfield County through the existing interconnection on Route 60. And so one of the questions that came out of the previous Board of Supervisors meeting was, well, how, how does this, how do the different projects stack up over time? And so we tried to put a, again, a high-level estimate of what the different engineering steps would be to accomplishing kind of these initial steps for the different scenarios, which we deemed, you know, best-case scenario, getting water from neighboring Chesterfield County through the existing interconnection. The next best-case scenario was getting water from Chesterfield while also creating a, a, a secondary interconnection at Robius Road. And then the third option was extending a water transmission main from Henrico County and getting water from Henrico County into, into Palatine through the transmission main that would come from the north, north side of Palatine. And so under scenario one, we would, again, this is kind of the best-case scenario of what we would anticipate. Most of the infrastructure improvements you see here are, in fact, all of them are wastewater-related because we assume in the best case that we're getting water through the existing interconnection at, at 60. So again, these are high-level numbers, really just meant to, to be for planning purposes and budgeting purposes. But this is kind of the timeline that we would expect that you would need to start expanding the wastewater treatment plant out there at Dewtoy Creek over the next 20 years. And then timeline number two would involve this interconnection to Chesterfield at Robius Road. This, that's obviously a pretty significant undertaking, so there's, there's significant costs associated with that. So we're showing, you know, again, the initial expansion of Dewtoy Creek, but then, then there's also the extension of this water transmission main from Chesterfield at Robius Road down to the Flat Rock area to support the continued, continued growth in that area, and then a couple of more Dewtoy Creek expansion projects. And then lastly, this would be, again, kind of that worst-case scenario where, where we're unable to obtain additional water from Chesterfield, but we look to Henrico to supply then those needs, and we have to, you know, do a sub-aquatic crossing of the James River. And so that would involve, again, an, an additional extension of, of finished water lines from Henrico to, to Palatine County, and then the rest of that transmission main down from the, the Palatine County border with Henrico to the Flat Rock area. So I think that this was hopefully kind of the, the tool that you would, you were looking forward to, to, to understand, you know, what the, where the different scenarios would, might end up, and then when those, when that windfall might, might, might be required to, to, to be met. So that was really it. These are just, again, a summary of the different scenarios that we presented last time, these three slides. So, yeah. That's all I got for you.
Questions? If I could, Mr. Chairman, on page 13 of the executive summary that you provided us for wastewater treatment in 2030, assuming Fighting Creek is turned to a pump station, we push everything to Dewtoy, it was 32, round figures, 32 million bucks. I don't, how does that jive with the?
Yeah, so the-
The numbers aren't equating.
The projects that we identified, and this was critical steps that needed to be taken to, to continue the growth within the county. In our view, that project is an optional, an optional, I guess, project that would hopefully be supported by WQIF grant funding from DEQ that would allow the majority of that cost to be absorbed by grant funding. It's not a necessary project to, to maintain growth within the county, but it's kind of one of those maintenance projects that we would recommend because you're consolidating, you know, all your eggs in one basket, essentially. So it makes it easier to, to own and operate that wastewater facility.
Is it, is it right to assume that if we are able to get additional water from Chesterfield, every gallon that comes in is eventually, short of evaporation, is going to have to go through Dewtoy?
Yeah, it, yes. Everything that would come through Chesterfield, because there's no interconnection from, from the Flat Rock area up to courthouse, yes. So it would be going through Dewtoy.
So if we are able to get 750 to 2 million gallons more, that's all going to go to Dewtoy? So it's, that plant's going to have to be-
Correct.
Increased. So that's not an optional thing. If the water comes, we've got to treat it.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay. That didn't jive with what you, what you just showed up there, though.
In terms of?
The numbers looked, looked very small.
The, the wastewater numbers? Well, that's because you're-
You're assuming grant funding?
Well, so the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant at Dewtoy is only on a, the, the value of, or the treated capacity, the rated capacity of the treatment plant is on an average-day basis. We're looking at water in terms of a max-day basis. So really, when you think about the, the, if, if our max day is, well, I think it was like 2.2 million gallons per day water usage, have that, and you're getting closer to what your actual sewer usage is. And actually, your sewer usage is, is probably going to be a little bit less than that because people consume, consume a lot of water. A lot of it gets used for irrigation. So there's those pieces of the puzzle that, that we show an expansion of, of Dewtoy up to 1 million gallons per day. That's consistent with what we, what, what we'd anticipate. That's on an average-day basis, what we anticipate for the next 20 years.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could, too, in the report, a recommendation that you all made was that you needed to give yourself at least five-year lead time. If you're planning on doing this project in 2030, you need to be doing some stuff in 2025-
Right.
-to prepare yourself. If you could go back to that chart, I want to see if I understand that, that what we should be doing now, I think.
Yeah, I think I might need some help with that.
That chart's a new chart, though. I don't-
That's right.
Is it, is it in our packet?
It's, it was, it was developed for this board presentation.
Ah, okay. So we haven't seen it before. Till today.
That's right. And, and I will add that we are holding a proposal from Brett and Duberry to do design on the Dewtoy Creek wastewater treatment plant expansion. But two things are happening simultaneously. We're also in a corrective action process with DEQ, and we've done some engineering work to satisfy DEQ's requirements. At some point, we need to merge those two efforts. What we're doing to satisfy DEQ needs to be incorporated into the Dewtoy Creek expansion, but we're waiting to hear back from DEQ on whether or not they're going to approve what we've submitted in our corrective action plan.
Anticipated when?
We've, we've been waiting for a month at this point. Yeah.
Okay. I just want to be sure that we, we as a board are aware of what you are recommending that we be doing now.
Yes.
Because we're getting ready to go into, into a budget cycle. And so if you could just go over that one more time for water and sewer.
Sure. So I'll use scenario two, because in, in my opinion, this is probably kind of a step into scenario three. So this is not the worst case, but it's the, I would say it's the best worst case. So we would anticipate needing to expand Dewtoy Creek by approximately 2030. So within, you know, within the next five years. We've, we've developed, like Will said, we've provided a proposal to do the engineer, the, the preliminary engineering to identify what processes need to be upgraded at Dewtoy Creek. And we would anticipate that the construction period of that would take a little less than two years once the project is, is designed, or a little over two years, once the project is designed. The design period would be a little less than two years. So, you know, call the total engineering period, you know, a little less than three years, and the construction period a little more than two years. That, that gets us to that five-year mark. And so, you know, within that period, you already own the land for that one, so it's really just, it's an engineering problem to solve. It's not a land acquisition. We're not looking, you know, for anything like that. But there is the, the question like Will mentioned about the regulatory piece of it on, on the, the effluent limits at that facility that needs to be answered, and Will has been working with-
Okay, so we're spent, we're doing the 1.5 now. We're doing the engineering now in the light-
The preliminary engineering. It's the, the darker shade there, the 120K.
Okay. And in FY '27, we need to be thinking about 1.5 million?
That's right. Yeah.
So that will be in our, in our CIP discussions for the upcoming budget.
This will be your 27.
27. Okay. What's, what's a similar number for water?
So on water-
Might be hard to do because you don't know-
Correct.
Where it's coming from.
Right. Yeah. So once that question is answered, which I would say that by the end of probably the fall, we'll have a pretty clear understanding where that, what, what, what's going on with that. So again, you know, i- if the answer is, you know, Chesterfield says yes, we, you know, we can provide some additional water, and, and we can do it through the Route 60 interconnection, great. You know, that's ready to go. That can support up to, I think, 12 million gallons per day as it currently is designed, or 8 million gallons per, per day as it is currently designed, which is enough water to get you through the end of the planning period, assuming that they can open the spigot. If, if that's not an option, and we have to go north to the Robius Zone to interconnect there with Chesterfield, then we're looking at, you know, the, what these, what these numbers don't include, I would say, is land acquisition and the timeline for land acquisition, which can potentially be longer than these periods are. And that's kind of hard to nail down until we, you know, know where, where we're going.
I, I hate to belabor this, but I, I'm not understanding. The, the figures there in, in the series of rectangles there in the middle, does that represent water?
Yeah. So the blue ones are water. The, the green ones and the different shades of green are wastewater. of green are wastewater. So the darker blue on the left is preliminary engineering, the lighter blue in the middle is engineering design, so that's actually developing the design documents, drawings and specifications for, for the, for the project that we're looking at. And then the kind of grayer shade of blue is the construction period.
And you're, you're suggesting that by virtue of that, that we have, there's nothing we need to be considering in FY '27 to fund anything having to do with water, even though it's, we're, we're supposed to be starting something in that 2030 timeframe. What should we be doing now?
For, for water is answering, I think today is answering the question about where is that water coming from? And then if, sure, if there's, if, if there's more timeline that we can gain and move those numbers over, like, that, that's part of this tool. It's not meant to be something that's set in stone, but as that, as the question is answered of, of where the water's coming from, then we can a- ask the question, okay, what steps do we want to take now that we know this, the answer to those questions?
So these num- these numbers will all need to be revised as soon as we get something definitive from-
Yeah, I would think so, but also I, I would, I would say that this is meant to be kind of like a, you know, an estimate of what the timeline is. The land acquisition piece, which is really hard to quantify, especially from a timeline perspective, because that can just be very time consuming, that, that, that piece of the puzzle is hard to put onto an engineering document, I would say, because we, we just, one, we don't know where we're going, and two, we don't know who's going to be willing to provide land or, you know, to, to be able to accommodate that project, so.
I understand. One last question, if I could. When, I asked Will, when would you anticipate having this plan updated in light of what the comprehensive plan working group is going to do, and out of the habitat study, what are our revised comprehensive plan in FY '26, or calendar '26, this plan's going to have, potentially have to be changed? Are we prepared to, in your view, bring them back for, for an update or of the plan?
Yes, I'll say a, a couple of things. One of the things I'll say is that Duberry is on an on-call services contract with the county, so we leverage Brett and his expertise and his team as an extension of staff all of the time. Brett knows our utility system extremely well, so we're, we're always communication, in communication about the master plan, but also a variety of utilities projects going on in the county. I think one of the valuable things about the master plan is it layered in the, the comprehensive plan. So we looked at the actual parcels of land that are identified for development, we worked with Brett and his team to get an idea of what development in those parcels will look like, and that generated their demand projections. And that's good news, too, because if development comes in according to the comprehensive plan, we have the opportunity to ask those developers to help us build out this vision. Part of what was limiting us prior to having a comprehensive water wastewater master plan was that vision, and, and so I think this is a huge step forward.
Plan's well done. I, I, it was a good, a good job, if I do say so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution R 2025-47, the utility master plan developed by Duberry engineers dated May 2025.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is 5-0, that'll bring us to our public hearings.
So our, our first public hearing is Item A, Resolution R 2025-49, which authorizes the board chair to sign an agreement transferring ownership of the Pocahontas Landmark Center to Powhatan County. And we do have an overview of the Pocahontas Landmark Center that we're going to share. So the presentation that's coming up on the screen will review the building's history, the proposed demolition project, and its current use and ownership. So we'll go to the next slide. And so we'll start just with a review of the building's history. In 1931, the Powhatan Training School was established for African-American students. The Training School provided continuing educational opportunities for African-American youth in Powhatan following their high school graduations. It was in 1937 that a brick high school for African-American students was constructed on the PLC site for $40,000. In 1941, that brick high school was renamed the Pocahontas High School, and it continued to serve African-American youth in Powhatan. In 1969, the building became Pocahontas Middle School when county schools were desegregated. And in 2018, Powhatan Middle School was closed and students were relocated to the new county middle school. In 2019, the county renovated portions of the PLC building to house school administration offices and renovated and converted the gymnasium into the headquarters for the county's Parks and Recs Department. The next slide is a photo of the historical marker that was placed on the PLC site in 2015, and the sign there highlights much of the history that we just reviewed. Yep, this slide provides a bird's eye view of PLC. Color coded the wings there, the A wing is outlined in green. This is the portion of the school that was constructed in the 1930s, and it includes the historic Pocahontas High School. The B wing is outlined in orange. This portion was built in the 1940s and 50s and includes the original African-American elementary or primary school. The C wing is outlined in blue, and the D wing is outlined in purple. Both of those wings were built in the 1950s and 60s. So we'll shift our focus now to the PLC demolition project. This slide shows the demolition plans for PLC. The areas shaded in gray are, these are the areas that were indicated for proposed demolition. In 2014, the county issued debt and borrowed $900,000 for PLC demolition on behalf of Powhatan County Public Schools. The Board of Supervisors made this decision based on the understanding that demolition was needed for health and safety reasons. In 2025, the Powhatan County Public Schools reported that $900,000 may not be enough to complete the project, and they provided a new estimated cost of $1.6 million to complete the demolition project. This was just an opinion of probable cost, not an official build or a final figure. While the Board of Supervisors was working to understand the project cost increase to $1.6 million, that, they also learned that the engineers' earlier recommendation for demolition was not solely based on health and safety reasons. The engineers noted that the B, C, and D wings could potentially be renovated instead of demolished, and the new information raised additional questions about the project. So in early summer, the Powhatan County Public Schools solicited formal bids for the demolition project, and the lowest bid received came in with, within the original $900,000 budget. This meant the project can move forward for the amount that was initially borrowed. In the spring of 2025, the Board of Supervisors wanted more clarity on the cost of renovating versus demolishing the PLC buildings, so they began working with project engineers on a feasibility study scope. The engineers provided valuable input, and the B, C, and D wings were identified as candidates for possible renovation. Before the feasibility study proposal was finished, the school board voted to move forward with demolishing the PLC wings. As a result, the engineers were notified that the study would not continue. During the period that the county was working with engineers to develop the feasibility study scope, we learned some new information. We learned that the, or the project engineers clarified that their initial cost estimates for renovation were based on broad averages rather than site-specific analysis. They emphasized a detailed building-specific assessment would be valuable for accurate renovation costs, and they also indicated that the PLC wings could likely be renovated at a lower cost than building new space of similar size. So next, we'll shift our focus to the building's ownership and use, and discuss three recent efforts to clarify the responsibilities of Powhatan County Public Schools and the county while they share use of the space. We'll start with the 2019-2020 lease agreement. This slide outlines that agreement between the county and schools. This is a 20-year renewable lease approved by the county in November 2019 and the school board in February of 2020. The lease covers several areas inside the building and includes outdoor spaces, and under the agreement, the county is responsible for scheduling and maintaining the outdoor areas, and schools is responsible for indoor maintenance and capital planning. This is the agreement that is in effect currently. Under the lease, the area outlined on blue on this slide shows the indoor space occupied by the county. The schools own both the area outlined in red and in blue, but the lease serves as the vehicle for the county's use of the indoor space outlined in blue. In 2022, the Board of Supervisors adopted Resolution R 2022-03 on January 24 of 2022, accepting the school board's transfer of surplus property. This trans, this transfer has not been finalized. To finalize the transfer, a site survey and a deed are needed. If finalized, this slide shows the areas that will be owned by the county, and those are outlined in blue. The, the building and the outdoor space that would be owned by the county. And outlined in red are the buildings and outdoor space that the school board would retain ownership of. The MOU on tonight's agenda would initiate a third option for PLC ownership. With this option, the school board would declare PLC as surplus property, and the county would take ownership of the campus. The schools would keep their admin space at no cost, and the county would take over maintenance, utilities, and capital planning responsibilities for the campus. The MOU would be effective for 20 years with annual reviews. And this slide shows the property that would transition from school board to county ownership if the 2025 MOU moves forward. Discussion and direction on this MOU is the item on the board's agenda tonight.
Just a clarifying question. Will, the resolution in 2022, was that approved by both boards?
Might need help from Cali on that one, approve that both boards.
Yes.
It just was not finalized on our part.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, on either board's part.
Any questions before we open up to the public, what we just saw? All right. We will now open up the public comment period for this hearing. As you come forward, please state your name and address. There's no, there's no total time limit for this, so usually in public comment, we have a 30-minute time limit, but for public hearings, we do not. So you will have three minutes as an individual, five minutes as a group, and as I said, please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I'm at 1727 Teresa Lane. I actually went to school during middle school at this school, and I want, I want to ask the Board of Supervisors to try and save the full school building in its current shape. They should try, they should cancel the demolition and they should try renovating it. In fact, if Powhatan County needs help, there is, in 2026, there's going to be a major grant opening up for school construction repairs that is $80 million from the state of Virginia's Education Department. Powhatan could easily, could, could try to, could try to reach out to ask for this grant to give out the millions of dollars needed to renovate the three school wings to modern code, but Powhatan needs to save the old school.
Thank you.
My name is Renee Fisher. I'm at 4248 Anderson Highway. Board members, I'm speaking on behalf of citizens who are proponents of saving the Powhatan, the Pocahontas complex. We want to share what we are in favor of and then what our concerns and questions are. These ideas are a summary, but there is a petition circulating of over 500 signatures that share this point of view. I'll make it brief, but for now, these are ideas and suggestions about the plans for Pocahontas. First of all, summary position. Number one, we are in favor of the Pocahontas complex not being demolished at all. That includes all of the buildings. We are in favor of transferring the Pocahontas complex to the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors for the express purpose of rehabilitation, repurposing, and reuse. We are in favor of providing more public notice about the plans for the Pocahontas complex. Our questions and concerns and general information are as follows. Number one, what is the value of these buildings, not only in terms of dollars? Number two, what is the cost, not only in dollars, of saving them versus tearing them down? Number three, what resources and dollars and community commitment are available to save them, rehabilitate them, renovate, and repurpose them? We understand that county leaders may have been debating this issue for years, but we are positive that the issue is new to many people, so why the rush? The historical value of the buildings alone is enough to demand that the wide community of residents, taxpayers, and stakeholders in Powhatan and far beyond are duly notified, actively invited to give input, and asked whether they would like to contribute in some way to a positive outcome. Have there even been demolition notices posted? And if so, where? Who is making sure that people who graduated from the school, proponents of historic preservation, and keepers of Black history, are aware of the potential peril awaiting these structures? Has the board worked with alumni associations, advertised in multiple publications on television and on social media? We are positive that not all- That's okay. We are positive that not all stakeholders are aware that history is in danger of destruction. Our petition calling for at least a pause and preferably a halt to the destruction has more than 500 signatures in just a few days of people who object to the demolition, and it is growing daily.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Would you mind wrapping up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
In, in, very quickly, is, is the board aware of the deep historical significance of the buildings at Pocahontas? Has anyone studied it? In addition to any engineering or fiscal analyses that may have been conducted, we would like to know about the, know about and see any evidence that county leaders have an understanding of the role Pocahontas played in the history of the county and of the concerns and of the state, especially pertaining to desegregation. Anything that fails to address all of these concerns is inadequate, and to tear down these structures without addressing all of these concerns for residents, taxpayers, and stakeholders would be a shame. We are less concerned about the ultimate use because we trust that the community has many great ideas for how to repurpose them wisely, but as Pocahontas proponents, we want the structures saved and put to worthwhile use. We want the history remembered, recorded, and shared widely as part of the preservation effort. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Simon Wong, 4005 Solomon's Path. No demolition, please. My agenda is for the county to renovate parts of the building, the campus, and repurpose it as a community center for seniors and all age groups. Why? Why spend a million dollars of taxpayers' money to burden our landfill and end up with an unused pile of dirt? Does this scenario make sense to you? Can we stop this madness? I believe elected official should prioritize the interests of their constituents over their own personal agendas and egos. I am saying this to reflect someone who said... This person said this. This does not sit well with me. Same person also said, "I don't play that way." This is not a game. It has nothing to do with you personally. Furthermore, is demolition really the best decision made for Palatine Public Schools? Maybe we should ask if demolition of Pocahontas School is the best decision for citizens of Palatine. I know all along there has been mistrust and maybe even some bad blood between the school board and the Board of Supervisors. Dysfunctional politics and ugliness it brings forth have a negative impact on us, who elected officials to office. Now, self-righteousness perpetuates narrow-mindedness that make us take actions that are misguided. Taxpayer of this county do have a voice. They need to be heard, not just a monologue, but as something meaningful and constructive. We cherish our rights to be part of decision-making and to make Palatine a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Terry McClung, 215 Petersburg Road, and I would like to request five minutes on behalf of Palatine first.
Greta.
First off, I would like to thank all of you on the board for your continued efforts to save PLC from demolition. This is a cause that's near and dear to my heart and something I have been advocating for since the first talk of demolition began years ago. With over 30 years in the construction industry, I've always said that they are brick buildings with concrete floors and utilities. Of course, they can be saved. Pocahontas Middle School, now Pocahontas Landmark Center, is more than just a building. It's a part of me. It holds the laughter, the awkwardness, the growing pains, and the joy of becoming who we were meant to be. It's where I said goodbye to childhood and stepped into something new. You finally get to graduate from elementary school. It's next level. It's a big deal. That's why I don't want to see my fourth, fifth, and seventh grade halls or the cafeteria demolished, because those spaces hold memories that shaped who I am. It's my fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Kaczynski, with her shockingly long painted toenails and flip flops and for leaving us mid-year. It's Mrs. Hatcher taking over our class and the famous field trip to her farm. It's paper mache pumpkins and classroom parties. It's walking into Mrs. Fox's class on the first day of fifth grade and finding my lifelong best friend, even though she's never forgiven me for writing second best friend in that year's yearbook. That's okay. I'm not sure I ever forgave her for slapping me on the seesaw when I said I didn't like Michael Jackson. Don't worry, she must have slapped some sense into me because I even convinced my mom to buy me the Thriller album on this hot new thing called an eight-track. And I can still sing every word to Thriller, Beat It, and Billie Jean. It's us getting caught by Mrs. Fox applying way too much blue eyeshadow in the girls' bathroom. It's pink Oxford shirts, big hair, monogram purses with wooden handles, and the start of the punk rock era. It's singing Delta Dawn and Jose Cuervo at the lunch table with that same best friend, even though now I realize those songs were probably not age-appropriate. It's turning bugle chips into long fingernails and mini ice cream cones at the lunch table, and let's not forget the metal Wonder Woman lunchbox. It's dodgeball, kickball, tetherball. It's Red Rover. It's May Day and Field Day. It's the talent show when a group of us girls sing and dance to Girls Just Wanna Have Fun, and for three minutes, we really believed we were stars. It's our time capsule buried in the front yard. It's raising the American flag in the mornings and singing the Pledge of Allegiance. It's 4H with Johns Bailey. It's Smokey the Bear reminding us that only we can prevent forest fires. It's school dances and chorus practice and concerts in the cafeteria with Mr. Alexander. It's almost winning the spelling bee but misspelling liar in the final round. I've never made that mistake again. It's the pocket grammar book Mrs. Woodard had us purchase in sixth grade that I still have and is in my desk drawer at work. It's finding out that Mrs. Burtok shared my birthday. It's Mrs. Monhardt's famous president's book and timeline. It's her telling us that if the first words we spoke on the first day of the month were rabbit rabbit, we'd have good luck. I've only remembered once in all these years. It's the Scholastic Book Fair. It's Shel Silverstein's Where the Sidewalk Ends. It's the card catalogs in the library where I developed my lifelong love of reading. It's the librarian Mrs. Scott's whisper ones and whisper twos, and trust me, you did not want to get to whisper three. It's Mr. Duckhart's computer science class with DOS computers. He tried so hard to teach us, but we only wanted to play Oregon Trail and try not to die of dysentery. These are more than just memories. These are moments that shaped us. That building held generations of children as they stepped into themselves. And what makes it even harder is this: We still get to visit our old elementary school. It was beautifully renovated into this very village building we are standing in right now. Our old high school was transferred into the new Palatine Middle School. Those buildings were given new life. They still hold their history. They still hold their heart. Pocahontas Landmark Center should be given the same chance at a repurposed life, because tearing it down means tearing out a piece of our story, my story. A place where we learned, grew, made mistakes, and laughed until we cried. This trip down memory lane prompted me to pull out an old yearbook. The theme of my sixth-grade yearbook is all of us together. I think that is very fitting, and I hope the Board of Supervisors, the school board, and all of us together can find a way to save these salvageable halls and the cafeteria, because what they hold cannot be rebuilt. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Elmore Cook, 4827 Red Lane Road, Palatine. I'm here to support your resolution for the memorandum of understanding for the transfer of your property, Pocahontas property, from the school board session back to the county, and hopefully we can do something where that make good use of it after your county does its necessary repairs. I have talked to a lot of people in the last six months, and 99% of people oppose to the demolition of this property, and they think it should be fixed up and used for other purposes. And so, one or two people said they thought it should be demolished. Out of all these people, there's been a lot of public opposition to this throughout the county for the last, especially the last two months from, you know, the social media, news people. It seemed like every day for a while, we were in the news, and most everybody is opposed to demolition of this, and they want you to save this from demolition and find a good use for that property.
Thank you.
I'm Lorraine Jones on Page Road. We've met many a time. What I'm asking you all to do is, I agree that the property should be transferred to the supervisors' board. However, what concerns me is the dollar and cents, is what I've always talked about. The buildings should be preserved. They should be renovated. But let's do it with actual figures. There's too many decisions here to make on just estimates and guessing at things in a quick timeline. Let's put this off for a couple of months. Let's hold some community meetings, get input from the community, get actual figures the best you can. But you also have to look at, you're talking about allowing the school board to stay in this building, if I understand you correctly, with no cost. Does that make good economic sense when they have their own budget? They should be paying something to quote-unquote "rent" the building. There should be some compensation here. They have their own funds to work within. So they should be paying a rent to stay in this building, just like now they're having to pay to maintain the building. You've got to adjust the allocated funds to the right buckets. But it needs to be done strictly on dollar and cents. These buildings do not need to be torn down. They have too much history in this county that should be preserved, but it's the fact that they're in good shape. The bones are in good shape. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Taylor, 3838 Mapuche Trail. I'm also the representative for the school board for District 4, so I'd appreciate five minutes if that's possible.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Well, as you've heard this evening, much debate on this, and I can say that for myself, and I think I can speak for the board as well, we understand the connections, the memories and the emotions that come with that, and we have taken that to heart. The debate over this facility has been going on for years, going on for at least six years. Multiple studies have been conducted to determine the feasibility of a renovation and the best use of the property. It was a major admin discussion when I came onto the board in 2021, September of that year. In fact, one of the first things I did was go and take a tour with our current chair of BCND Wings, and it was in that walk-through that I saw firsthand the damage that the leaky roofs had caused due to years of neglect. So, Board, we debated long and hard, both of our boards, about what should be done. All kinds of proposals have been brought forward by both boards, and as we've wrestled with them, several factors were taken into consideration, such as safety to our staff there at the PLC, security for the school that's next door, current and future educational needs, and then weighing all of that with the cost of renovation against the need for space and the use of those spaces for our current needs. Based on those studies, community discussions, staff input, and pouring over the financial numbers, both of our boards determined that the best use was to move toward demolition. So as we saw in the slides earlier in 2024, the Board of Supervisors approved appropriated the money for the demolition, which was scheduled to take place at the beginning of this past month. In my opinion, much misinformation has been shared over the last few months, and I would like to just clarify a few things. In March, as the school board was working to finalize the contract for the demolition work, the Board of Supervisors, in my opinion, kind of swooped in last minute, asked for a stay, I believe it was 60-day stay, to do another study to look at the feasibility of a renovation. We were shared, it was shared with us that the Board of Supervisors interested in turning this space into a community center, for park and rec, for a community center. And so, our chair reluctantly agreed, but it didn't seem like there was progress moving forward, maybe week three, four. We decided to move on and to go out for contract, to select a firm again on our contract. Obviously, our action was understandably criticized by the Board of Supervisors. After some private and public discussions, there was a pitch made to us of taking ownership of the complex with the promise of allowing the school board to continue to use the current space at no expense. This pitch was made differently to different groups, and I think that's caused a little bit of confusion. I think it's caused a little bit of anger in some situations, because it was different in different groups of people. And I won't go into that right now. I've made that clear in other meetings. I've made the case, both privately and publicly, for why I cannot support the transfer, the deed for the PLC to go to the BOS. However, I want to reiterate one reason that's become increasingly apparent to me. I believe there must be a separation between the two boards. While it sounds noble to say that we are on the same team, we're not on the same team. We're two, in fact, two different boards. Board of Supervisors is rightly tasked with stewarding the resources and the needs of the entire county. Your primary focus will never be on the school system. It cannot be. I would not expect it to be solely on the school system. Therefore, you all act on the needs and the requests of the school system in relation to how those fit within your comprehensive plan for the county. On the flip side, the school board is rightly tasked with the stewardship of the resources and needs of our nearly 4,000 students and our 900-plus employees. Our window of focus is much tighter. So while the pitch to hand over the PLC and have no expenses sounds wonderful, it is, in fact, as I've said on record, too good to be true. May be true today with the current board, but boards change every four years, and board priorities change. So I believe these buildings need to come down so that when the need is apparent and the time is right, the land can be repurposed for future educational needs, saving the residents of Palatine the price of land purchase in the future. Now, I would like to be on record for supporting a community center when the timing is right. I think it'd be nice to have one, but honestly, as I've asked, I don't know what exactly a community center means. So far, I have not heard any formal plan of what it could look like, what it would contain or services it would provide. There does seem to be some support for it among our residents, but is there enough support to warrant the spending of $30 to $50 million? The study of the Board of Supervisors is using to support this is the, this project comes from a survey that was conducted or finalized last fall that had 394 respondents, and of those, 291 indicated that they believe the community center is needed. Obviously, that's an overwhelming majority from the survey, supporting a community center here, but I'm not convinced that the survey adequately represents the county, because 58.1% of those respondents are 55 or older. So the question there would be, since we've heard about money, how much will our taxes have to increase to support a facility and the program in there? A community center sounds great, would serve some of our residents well, but is it the absolute right need today? I cannot believe that it's the top priority in Palatine, as we've seen in some of these slides this evening. So in my opinion, it's nothing more than a want. To build a renovated space for a community center at the tune of tens of millions of dollars seems physically irresponsible. It's like a man who has a leaky roof and an HVAC, and he's repaired it, goes and buys a new truck. So I would encourage the Board of Supervisors to focus on generating new expenditure streams of revenue in our county, build up the economy of our county, so by attracting new businesses so that our sales stack dollars stay here rather than going outside the county, and then when the revenue is in place and the timing is right, build a community center. But I don't believe that time is today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward in public comment period? Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period. Opens it up to board comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So as a gentleman alluded to earlier, I like to tell stories, and since my wife's here, I know she'll help me keep it short. So I remember a long time ago, in a city far, far away, I pursued a paralegal certificate. And I remember one thing, when we got the family law, especially when it involved custody cases, the one thing they always emphasized, what's in the best interest of the child? I haven't heard one thing from the school board about how keeping this facility benefits the education of one student in this county. So I just have a few talking points that I'd like to go over. So first of all, given the property to the county, it would have no negative impact on the schools. In fact, it would ensure they wouldn't have the continued maintenance and insurance costs. The county would assume all these costs, which would save the school the headache of managing the PLC, and they could focus on education. Would also create efficiencies by having the sole party, the county, responsible for maintaining the entire complex. And as one of the gentlemen alluded to earlier tonight, it also helps us to maintain the sustainability of the school budget. Also, owning the entire facility means there is no complex legal arrangement that needs to be made. Although the schools may ask for further assistance in illegal documents such as a rent-free lease, like the county has now, they would be free to do so. be free to do so. Repurposing the wings that are salvageable would save the county money because it's cheaper than new construction. Now evidently, some of the board members from the school board didn't attend the board of supervisors meetings where they did, uh, we did the survey, we did the presentation, we actually hired somebody to give us the ideas for the community centers and what they would cost. And you know, based on the survey, the, that, the majority of the residents wanted a community center. So that's what we went with. That's why we hired the consultant, and that's why we did the study. So how does, how does the school having P L C benefit the education of any of our children? They say, well, you know, we could have the current for additional services and C T E. Well, you know, the beauty of the M O U is that the school administration can ask for an expansion anytime, and it can be done by mutual agreement by two boards. And one of the things that one of the gentlemen said earlier today, and, and, and then I was kind of disappointed from some of the school board comments, we are two separate boards, but we need to work together. The money that we give you is the responsibility of the county. We're not just responsible for the schools. We're responsible for all the citizens of the county. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. McClung.
I'm gonna give me, give my history, uh, all care. Um, so all these buildings we're talking about, I'm probably one of the few that went to elementary school right there next door, which is now the health service building. I went to kindergarten, first grade there. I went to second and third grade here, this building, did plays, concerts, everything up here. Fourth grade, I was, it was in the old, um, the free clinic building, which was the old school, which was the old band building for the old football field that used to be down there. I went to fourth grade there, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, I went to the, the school that we are talking about demolishing. Um, after that, eighth grade, through my senior year, back then, eighth grade was in the, the high schools I was in, which is now the middle school. That's where I spent the rest of my days playing football and baseball and graduated from Palatine High School. The other thing is, so that's, that history lesson as far as I will be supporting this resolution. So, which I've said that from the beginning, and I will not destroy the asset that the residents of county, the Palatine County owns. They own that bill, the taxpayers will be, it, it'd be like destroying every asset that they have down there. And uh, I don't, and I've gotten many calls, I've had many emails, texts, citizens talking to me, they do not want this torn down, as, as many of y'all said. Um, the other thing is that, I don't know if y'all knew this, but I'm a facilities manager for the whole state of Virginia, and um, I've renovated many buildings older and in worse shape than that one right there throughout this entire state. And um, they are great buildings that could be, it could be saved, renovated, and used for the people of Palatine. And Mr. Kenny was right, we had feasibility studies for the community center, and we've also allocated some money already for a community center. So all that's, we've been into making for this for three or four years, but we did do a feasibility study, and an overwhelming majority of everybody was, they wanted a community center. So, um, I'm gonna leave it at that, but y'all know how I stand, and that's it.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. McClung made a valuable point in a meeting I was with him, and he's repeated it just a moment ago, and that is, we have an asset, and if we knock it down, guess what? We don't have the asset any longer. Simple, simple uh, kind of uh, description of the situation, but I think very, very accurate. Um, I, I, I don't support, and I really don't understand, the whole notion of an asset being retained by the school system where there are no students taught, and where there are no plans for putting students. I'm also confused when we realize that over the last four years, to my knowledge, the population, the student population in the county has gone down. Um, and the, everything that I'm seeing from the comprehensive plan working group, and the comprehensive plan even as it exists today, the development of this county is going to occur in the eastern, out to the east of this county. If, if you all buy into that, and that certainly is what, what appears to me, the eventual location, should we, should we need one? Should we even need another school? It, it makes, it, it, I don't think it would ever be built in that Pocahontas Landmark Center area. That school would be built somewhere out in the eastern part of the county where development is slated to occur. So it, it's just, it's just baffling to me beyond um, just it's mine, and I don't want to give it to you. Emotional kind of position. I'm just baffled at, at the recalcitrance of the schools, the school, school board to want to retain ownership of something that uh, it makes, it just makes no sense to me. Um, there's been some discussion in, in the, some of these two on two meetings that we've had, and with the speaker that suggested that some of those meetings were a bit confusing and muddled in terms of their conclusion. I couldn't agree more. But um, the message was, I think, in all those meetings, fairly clear, and, and I want to at least restate it from my perspective. Um, we care deeply about, about the school system here. It is one of the primary reasons that people come to Palatine County and want to settle and raise a family. So it, it is, it is one of the areas that we need to give, give attention to and give focus to. Um, and there was discussion about um, using the space once those rings were demolished to uh, build additional uh, school facilities um, around programs that to my mind, from my discussion with the superintendent, those programs would be better, better placed in, in the, in the school of origin in terms of alternative education programs. I just don't see um, any reason to, to look to any of that space being used for the construction of any additional schools for this county. So with those things in mind, um, I, I wholeheartedly support this resolution. But I do want to say that to another speaker's point, um, the decision to, to or not to knock those buildings down, I, I personally don't have adequate information to make that decision. Until the engine, until we have time for the engineers to go back in and pull the covers back and really give us a detailed estimate of cost, um, I, I'm really at a loss. So we need time to do that. Quite frankly, if the engineers come back and say, yeah, we want to reiterate this, these buildings are salvageable, uh, but the cost is twenty million dollars, a pickup, an outlandish figure. I, I will give second thought to whether, whether we want to spend that much money to, to do that building, to refurbish that building. If they come back and say, well, we, we missed some things, and it really isn't something that we can, we can renovate, and we get that information, then the historical part of it aside, just from a sheer business perspective, I would support those buildings being, being demolished. Um, so I need time. I need time to study this thing and for us to get some, some figures around which we can make an intelligent, informed decision. And right now, we don't have that information. I don't anyway. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I was having trouble with my button. Um, I'm not from Palatine. In fact, I'm not even from Virginia. I'm from North Carolina. So the historical side of this whole discussion, I have no bearing on. What I do have bearing on is that since nineteen eighty two, I've been in the construction business in one way or another. Um, my husband as a masonry contractor can tell you right now, if you've got brick walls and concrete, it can be saved. Okay? And that's what, what is over there. It's my understanding in the original report that there was only one section that could need to be demolished. I don't know which section that is off the top of my head. To save this building, or the bones, so to speak, is gonna be much less than it would be to tear it down and try to rebuild something there. We all know that the schools, uh, children has decreased over the years. I see that continuing. We are an aging county. Majority of the people that live here are older people. I'm one of them. Robert's one of them.
Thank you.
It would be nice to have a community center. I don't know whether anybody saw the initial uh, plans and what the cost was gonna be to purchase the land and build this new fantastic uh, community center. It was outrageous. It was. And I just, I really feel like that basing my opinion on construction to renovate those areas would be less money. It, it just really would. Um, will it ever be used as a school again? I doubt it. I, I agree with Robert. Everything that's growing is growing east of here. So the need for a school would be east of here if that came to pass. Um, I'm in favor of the revolution, resolution to save this building. Now, uh, I do agree with Robert. I would like to see a new study done, but you know, we're here to save taxpayer money, not spend it. And I just feel like that demolishing that building with its history is the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
My turn. Uh, I want to uh, make some comments based on uh, just kind of answering some questions that, that were brought up and, and I guess uh, a little bit of a rebuttal on some of the comments that were made earlier. Uh, but before I do that, uh, I want to thank staff uh, for creating an incredible resolution and M O U. Uh, when you read those documents, I don't have a clue how on earth you could disagree with any of that. It was so well-written, uh, and, and perfectly paints a picture of what we're looking for uh, as a county. So I, I just want to say thank you. I, I also want to say thank you to the uh, school board members that are in attendance from uh, District One, District Three, District Four, District Five. Thank you all for being here. Uh, I appreciate it. It says a lot. Uh, and I said the same thing to, to this board, uh, when I invited you all here to make sure that you're here. It's important for both boards to hear what the community wants, whether it's for or against this resolution. We need to hear what the community says. Uh, that's important to all of us. Um, there were comments made uh, about the twenty twenty four, um, uh, when both boards agreed to the demo. Um, that is accurate. Uh, what was not completely accurate was the information that was provided with that. Uh, we were not provided the detailed information uh, about the shape of each individual wing. Uh, so that was a little bit uh, gray, so to speak. We weren't provided uh, the accurate information. Um, uh, speaker said earlier, uh, there was an agreement to pause, uh, and then admittedly moved forward early. Uh, that created some tension between the boards, obviously. Um, there was a comment about uh, some of the earlier uh, uh, comments and some of the earlier presentations about needs for the county and kind of a focus to uh, make sure that we're, we're spending time focused on bigger needs, county needs. Uh, well, I would, I would ask that you would reciprocate that same statement and maybe take a look in the mirror and say, hey, maybe I should focus on school needs and not a location that, that does not educate children. Uh, so talked about, I heard a comment about future educational needs on that space. The growth is in the east end of the county, and we're not looking to build a school there. Uh, it's, it's not gonna happen. There's no plans anywhere in the foreseeable future about a future school. That, that's nowhere in conversations. So that is a mute point in my personal opinion. Talked about thirty to fifty million dollars was a number thrown out there for a community center. Uh, I don't remember if it was exactly that number, uh, but I can guarantee you, if we can renovate space, it will not be anywhere near that number, uh, which is why we're pursuing this space. Uh, we again received encouragement to focus on the community. When we focus on opportunities to save taxpayer dollars, that is us focusing on the community. If you've checked out, I, I'd like you to just check back in just for one minute. I'm almost done. If there's anything that both boards should take from this entire experience, it's that we are not dictators of individual districts. Those schools do not belong to any particular group, party, or board, but the people of Palatine County. We work for the people, all of us. Five board members, uh, supervisors, five school board members are elected to do the will of the people, not individual agendas. It is this entire, this entire experience has been nothing but just individual agendas, and I believe we've lost the vision of what we're here for. So I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty five dash forty nine, uh, in favor of the Pocahontas Landmark Center.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote on this one, please.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Ms. Morset.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kenny.
Aye.
Chairman Denotti.
Aye.
Item B under a public hearing is ordinance O twenty twenty five dash twenty three, a rezoning request in District Three. Mr. Ligon Webb, our planning director, will give an overview.
Seriously?
All right, I'll just give a, this is pretty quick and easy rezoning, which is kind of rare, but I think that I'll just have a couple of slides here to show you. So Howard rezoning, uh, case number twenty five eleven R E Z C with conditions. Uh, very simple. Uh, if you can look here to the, the map, uh, this is a rezoning of tax map twenty seven ten. Uh, it's currently zone agriculture is proposed, this small strip here, which is a two point three eight acres, uh, be rezoned uh, to Commerce Center, which is the zoning of the, the adjoining property, uh, twenty seven twelve A. Uh, this would facilitate a lot line adjustment. You can, if you can see here, uh, kind of, this is a pretty fairly accurate, uh, it's a very thin orange line right here. Uh, historically, this area that's proposed to be rezoned has been used uh, by this, by the parcel that um, would be doing the boundary line adjustment. So it's actually on the Howard property. This is something that's kind of developed over many years. So what they're doing is just sort of cleaning up this property line. Uh, our code requires that to do a boundary line adjustment, has to be with the same zoning. So the idea is to rezone this, and then the one condition would be that uh, they would, the adjoining property would then conduct a boundary line adjustment and bring that in uh, to their, to their property. Again, you can see that right there. Uh, the Plan Commission voted last month to approve this request. And again, here is the property. So that line's sort of right here, and uh, I'm sorry, kind of comes right, right, right along here. You can see some vehicles are there, have been used. Um, the, have been parked in that area for many years. Uh, and it's a couple of businesses, like there's a, uh, in, in this building, there is a car repair shop, I think they're a gutter uh, sort of shop that, and a couple other small
I think they're a gutter, uh, sort of shop that, and a couple other small businesses that operate out of here. Uh, and the comp plan long-term shows this area as, as, uh, rural areas, but again, it would just bring in this little small sliver that would be rezoned, and then the boundary line adjustment would happen, uh, just, just a kind of a cleanup. Any questions on this?
No. Good.
Yeah.
We'll, uh, open up for a public comment period for this hearing. If anybody wishes to come forward, please state your name and address. Three minutes for an individual, five minutes for a group. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period and open up to, uh, board comments or discussion. I'm leaning on you, buddy.
I was approached on this, uh, early on by the, uh, realtor involved, and it, it, it's an accommodation by, by that landowner and cooperating with, with the, the folks to give them adequate parking, and, and they're amenable to it. The two parties have agreed, and there's, there's no controversy there, so it seems to me to be fairly straight, straightforward. And, um, to that end, I, I would, unless there's additional comments from the, my colleagues, um, I, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 25-11 rezoning C, Sella, as presented in our packet.
Take a roll call vote.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Ms. Morsette.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kenny.
Aye.
Chairman Denotti.
Aye.
Passes fly vote.
The next item is ordinance O. 2025-22, an amendment to the countywide subdivision ordinance. Ms. Charity Gold from the Planning Department will give an overview.
Good evening, members of the board, Charity Gold. Um, this evening, I'm presenting countywide amendments to the subdivision ordinance relating to access and circulation and the minor subdivisions. So the purpose of these amendments is to allow additional access connections with subdivisions while ensuring safety and efficient travel on the public roadways. The, um, item was referred to the Planning Commission by the Board of Supervisors in November of 2023. Since then, the Planning Commission has held five work sessions on the proposed amendments, and on July 1st of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the proposed amendments. They'll give a little summary of the access and circulation amendments. The way that the, um, amendments are revised, they would apply to all new subdivisions of land, so that's creating two parcels or more. Um, they would be one access point allowed for subdivisions that are located on the major arterials. Um, they could, uh, get an additional access point if it was shown with a traffic analysis that that was needed for safety, or if it's required as a part of a subdivision that includes more than 50 lots. Um, all other roadways, for subdivisions on all the other roadways, the spacing would be determined based on the table that's included in the amendments, um, and that's dependent on the roadway classification as found in the county's thoroughfare plan. So I've got two examples on here, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at. The top one is an existing subdivision, was already approved, um, under, uh, the way this was done, it was allowed to have, um, I think, some shared access points. It was one subdivision that ultimately ended up in about eight access points on Highway 60, um, ending up in kind of a, uh, as an unsafe situation on the roadway. So if that were to come in under the revised ordinance, we'd be looking at one access point. Every lot within that subdivision would need to come in off of that one spot, and then the location of that access point would be determined based on an analysis of site distance, stopping distance, and spacing. So all those would go together in that review. Um, the image on the bottom is kind of the flip side of it. Our ordinance currently only allows one access. So this is one 20-acre lot, um, the owners want to divide it into two 10-acre lots, they're on a local road. There's really no reason why the additional access would be problematic, it's consistent with the requirements in the zoning ordinance, but we presently can't approve it because the, um, subdivision ordinance limits subdivisions to one access point. So with the adopted amendments, they'd be able to cut it like they, you shown with the yellow line down the middle, and then each parcel would have a direct access onto the local road. So with this package also is a change to minor subdivision, Section 68115. Um, that's intended to clarify that a minor subdivision doesn't require public, public street frontage, uh, which actually results in road stripping. Um, so we would eliminate item two that says all lots have to have public frontage, um, leaving the, the remaining six here for, um, review of minor subdivisions, which actually does refer you back over to the subdivision standards where the access management is, um, located. So that, that's kind of the brief overview of the amendments, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, Charity, the, the 50 homes in a subdivision, why 50? Why not 60? Why not 40? What, what, what's magical about 50?
Well, I'm, I, I speculate a little bit, the magic for me is that it's in the ordinance presently, it's a requirement that if you get to 50 lots, you have to have second access point. Um, and generally speaking, that's for, um, safety, so that, and, so people have a way to get out. And it's probably triggered by a certain number of trips related to how many lots are there, but it's a part of the ordinance and, um...
Fine. Um, my, my notion is, though, that for safety, whether you're 25 or 50, um, I, I was always led to believe by, by public, uh, safety, they wanted two, two points ingress and egress out of, out of any subdivision. What, why, why not here? Why, why are you setting it that if it's under 50, um, I'm not going to give public safety that, that access to the, to, to a house that's on fire or someone that needs help?
Sure. I, I don't, um, well, the, the way this is written, that requirement that you only have one access would only apply to major arterials, so that's not all the roadways, otherwise it's spacing. And if there was a reason, um, why you needed the second access, you could show that through a traffic analysis and then, and then have a second access point.
I, I don't, okay, I, I hear what you're saying, but I don't understand why a traffic analysis is going to, it, it'll show the number of times that people come in and out of those, that, that entrance, but I'm talking about for a fire engine or for a public safety vehicle apparatus to get, to get in and get out.
Mm-hmm.
With one, with one entranceway, that, that could be problematic. And I don't care if it's 25 or 50, I mean, the, the numbers are arbitrary to me.
I mean, it could be, I don't know the reason why the 50 is the threshold.
What, was it, was it discussed at the Planning Commission at all, or was the 50 just accepted?
No, it, no, it's in, it's been in the ordinance, so that wasn't a part of the discussion.
Okay. I hope we can give that some second thought in the future.
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So Charity, the ordinance says 50, so we're not changing that, you're just changing the entrance requirements on 50.
President.
Cause I, I know like Fairlane where Mr. Hughes lives, they got a lot of houses back there, there's only one way in and one way out.
Right.
And it's on a public road, Rocky Ford.
Mm-hmm.
So all we're doing here is your, the ordinance already defines 50, we're just giving multiple entrances to the lots inside, not egress, and, and we're, we're preventing dri, road stripping, where you got a driveway over 250 feet, which creates even more of a hazard, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Charity, the map that you showed up there, was that, uh, District Five?
Yes.
Has anybody driven down District Five where all those driveways are? Is extremely dangerous. So what we're, what they're proposing is, is to stop that, Robert. If you haven't driven down there, go down there, it's, it, it is, I'm surprised there haven't been any wrecks. Thank you, Charity.
Ms. Chairman, I have, I'm not quibbling with. Already in the ordinance, um, I appreciate that fact, and I wasn't proposing that we change that tonight. I just wanted to raise the question, that it seems arbitrary to me, and for public safety, I would think you'd need a point, a way to get in and a way to get out. And I don't care if it's 50 houses, 50, it's just, it's, just makes no sense to me.
I can probably look into that and get back to you and see if there's some sense to it, I'm...
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance O. 2025.
Make a public hearing.
Sorry, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm trying to be done already. I'm sorry. Let's, uh, I get you. Thank you so much. All right, let's, uh, let's open this up to, uh, public comment period. If you're interested in coming forward, please do so, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Carlos Schwentman, I'm 17, 27 Teresa Lane. Could they look at trying to consolidate some of the driveway entrances along Route 60? Cause I know it's like, you'll see like a thing where someone have a mile-long driveway, and then next to them have another mile-long driveway, and they go to the same similar place, and then they outlet on Route 60. I mean, would it be possible to like, try to like, put a T in or, put a T in or something like, consolidate like the, like, like for the, like 100 feet before the driveway reaches Route 60, they merge the two together, like have a little mini public street or something to like, try to consolidate all these driveways? Or have like a little side street thing to start consolidating all these driveways that they're taking over Route 60? Cause I notice the driveways are getting really bad in rural Powhatan where they're taking over.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period for that hearing. Board, additional comments? Go for it.
This button is working now. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance O. dash 2025 dash 22, countywide subdivision ordinance.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Ms. Morsette.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kenny.
Aye.
Chairman Denotti.
Aye.
Closes our public hearings, and do we have any, uh, county attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Any administrative comments?
No comments.
Additional board comments?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Like to thank everybody that spoke tonight, and everybody that's contacted me over the past couple days, well, past couple months, but, um, especially the past couple days. And I also like to clarify that the school board, it was a 3-2 vote. Three people decided to demolish it, two of them did not, so, although that's for the people that wasn't at the school board meeting, so, thank y'all.
Any other comments? Meeting adjourned.